All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I was kinda waiting for Kim to get back. It's six o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started. Thank you all for being with us tonight. And thanks for maintaining our social distancing. Just a reminder for the board members too and the folks that are speaking, make sure the mic is on because I got a comment last time that the folks at home couldn't hear us without the mic being on. So just make sure it's on and you're talking into it, you know, so that everyone can hear what everyone's saying. So we're gonna start out with a moment of silence. All right, if y'all wanna join me in a place, please stand up. I plead the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, the next item is the approval of the agenda. If I don't hear any objections, we'll consider the agenda approved. All right, next order is approval of the minutes from our regular meeting on May 26th. Need a motion for that?
Moved.
And moved to approved minutes?
Seconded.
So it's been moved and seconded that we approved the minutes of May 26th. I think we had a couple folks abstain, so all those in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight, and I think Dwight, you weren't here, were you, on the 26th? Okay, so. Who else wasn't here?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Cam?
Six or seven, I think.
Two of them, all right. All right, under special orders of business. I guess I'm on there, Office of Board Chairman. Okay, so just a couple things underneath this section here. Just to, you know, we had had a workshop back in the winter, I guess it was now. Maybe January, I guess, maybe February, where we outlined some goals as a board that we wanted to try to follow through with. And then we had a good meeting. Our plan was to break up the months, have one meeting in the month, like a business meeting, and the second meeting do a brainstorm meeting. So we did that with discipline and we had a really good meeting on that. I think it was February 25th, and then we got shut down for everything. So I just kinda wanted to review what we talked about for our goals and then kinda bring us up to speed with what we had talked about with the discipline and so that'll lead on to the rest of the meeting. So we had three goals that we had identified. One was review the discipline policy. The second was to review testing and assessment policy and then employee retention and recruitment. So those are the three things that we said that we would try to take on. Then we had some focus areas also for provide instructional support, continue to grow 4K program district wide, and continue to upgrade facility security. So that's just kinda just a refresher that what we talked about earlier in the year. And then just to talk about what we did brainstorming for discipline on October, or February 25th. We said we needed to define it, answer the questions, what's working now with respect to discipline? What are discipline issues? How do you suggest we solve the discipline issues? We were gonna collect community input, collect teacher input, review survey results. And that was under all defining it. Then we said we needed to educate the public. We needed to cover the discipline policy. IEPs, 504s, IDEA, law enforcement, how all those go together. Develop some kind of advocacy program so we could educate the public and our legislative delegation and then evaluate the current resources for help within our district and outside of the district. So that's kinda what we brainstormed and we were starting on that path to take on some of those things and we're gonna kinda continue that path tonight with our discipline discussion. So that's where we are, or where we were. We are where we are and we're looking forward to the future here. All right, so that's those two things, public participation discussion. Okay, so we suspended public participation earlier, I guess in March. And, you know, I think we kinda wanna entertain bringing the public back for discussions. You know, if someone, a member of the public had comments, you know, we can accommodate that now with the program we have in place here. So we will need a motion to bring that back into our meeting and we'll start that with the next meeting in July.
Make a motion that we bring back public participation.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on that? So Ms. Jackson brought up a good point via email about public participation too, about some people, some folks may not feel comfortable coming to the meeting for, you know, whatever choice they are. So if we could maybe develop some kind of program that they could email a question in if we had it and then we could read it and at least have their voice heard in the public session. So if we were, if we are amenable to that as a board, we probably need to amend the motion a little bit to accommodate that. Mr. Lawrence, you have a problem with that at all?
Mr. Chair, no, we don't, we don't have a problem with that at all. I think, I think the motion is appropriate as it is in that it reinstates the policy that already exists. And then you can accept public participation in any format that you like after that.
Okay, okay, I'm good with that.
Did we not discuss having a, every second meeting being a town hall meeting or something like that?
We were gonna do like the second meeting each month, like a brainstorming thing, yeah, yeah.
The only concern I have about emailing public input is that, and I doubt this would happen, but if you had mass numbers of these things coming in, you end up spending your whole meeting responding to public input. You know, and that's my only concern. I mean, as long as it's a reasonable number that we can get through without penalizing the time that we have. I mean, I think, I think we have so much, so many issues to deal with in a short period of time that we need to use our time. I mean, we've got to use a significant portion of time dealing with these crises that we're here to deal with. So, you know, I would love to hear public input on discipline, for example. I'd love to hear public input on, you know, I don't know that they care about testing one way or the other, but if they do, certainly I'd love to hear that. I don't particularly, there are other formats for hearing about a problem teacher. You know, I don't sit here and deal with that kinda thing. That needs to go through the channels that have been developed over the years. So just having said that, I mean, I don't wanna come across like I'm against public input because I'm not. I'm an advocate for, you know, having these, I really like the town hall meeting format of public input. You know, I love people come and stand up and speak and we can have a give and take as opposed to if they send an email, they don't have an opportunity to follow a question or clarification question.
Well, I would suggest with the emails, we just set a limit of how many we're gonna respond to simply because of the timeframe that we have. So we just, we pick, you know, how many we set for and then just address those. I'm sure that people understand, you know, because of COVID-19, you know, this is a different set of circumstances and we're just doing it the best way we can. So I would recommend keep the email, keep coming at random and then be aggressive.
Is that gonna be good with that?
Where do you want to start?
Right.
And maybe we won't have many, maybe we'll have thousands.
But it just gives the public the option for those who don't, you know, who still are apprehensive about coming in.
Absolutely, that's good. Okay, so we'll keep the motion as written and Mr. Lawrence, you guys can kinda regulate that stuff as you want. All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we reinstate the public participation aspect of the meetings. All those in favor, raise your hand. That's nine and none opposed. All right, sorry to be so long-winded under this section here, but we're trying to get some things logistically worked out. So the last one there is, we only have one meeting right now scheduled for July, July 14th. And it seems like that meeting's gonna be a pretty long meeting and there's probably gonna be a lot of things there. And it's right there, we're gonna, and we're gonna find out a little bit more later about where we are with starting school up and things like that. But I thought it might be a good idea to consider having another meeting there in July 'cause, you know, there's probably gonna be some things that we're gonna need to take some action. So I'd entertain a motion for that if, or a discussion if anyone's.
I like the motion that we have to do on 28th meeting.
Yep. All right.
And just the only discussion, we have a few things that are pretty time sensitive. As long as we get those on the 14th, 28th can just be carryover in other business we didn't get to.
Yeah, I think that, so I think that's, that's kinda the point.
Yeah, yeah, just clarifying.
No, that's good. Okay, so any other discussion on the motion? All right, so all those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, that's nine. And then, I don't have an under here, but just, and Cam reminded me of something. Cam came to the agenda planning meeting and Patrice, sorry, couldn't make it. And that invitation's open to any of the board members, you know. The policy says it's the superintendent, chair and vice chair, but we usually meet the Tuesday before the meeting, so we meet the 14th, we'll meet the 7th at 4:15. And, you know, it's pretty informal, we set the agenda and it's our agenda, right, as the board itself. So if any of y'all wanna come to those routinely or periodically, just to kinda get a flavor of it, you know, you're more than welcome to come and join us. Just let me know so we don't have more than four and then we'll get in trouble. So, but it was good, I think. Cam, did you wanna make a comment, Cam, or?
It's just, it's good, I think, for anybody to just go through the process. Yep.
All right, so that invitation's open, just, just let me or Kim know and we can kinda make sure we know who's all coming. All right, I think that's it under Office of Board Chairman. Thank you for your patience. All right, so consent items. The following items we voted on as a group. Individual items may be discussed prior to vote being taken. I'll go through these one by one. Notice we don't have a section, our normal section A is information items, but we don't have any information items, so we just have consent items tonight. So the first one is submission of the USDA fresh fruit and vegetable program grant. So we're submitting an application for, for these schools and requesting $325,000. No question on that? All right, so these next, let's see, two through, oh, two through seven, actually. So you might remember that we applied for these play 60 grants probably back in the fall or so. And it looks like we got all of them ones that we applied for, so I'll just go through each one at a time. Number two is for Wagner Sally and for 3768. And you can see it's used for bins, signage and items for composting. Next one is Ridge Spring Manetta for 3720, same thing, bins, signage, composting. Okay, so it looks like they're all the same, so I won't repeat that again. AL Corbett is 3710, New Ellington Steam is 3764, Ridge Spring Manetta Elementary is 3286 and LBC is 3993. So all play 60 grants that we applied for, so that's all money coming into our schools for those activities. So. Did we get a motion to talk about these?
No.
No? You see, that, that whole A and B really confused me, so I apologize for that. So we do need a motion to, to accept them and I already talked about them.
Chair, I move that we accept the items listed.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded that we accept the consent items and I do apologize for that. All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Notice that's nine. Yes, Cam, okay, individual items. B items, we need a motion for each one of these. The first one is personal appointments and you saw the list that was included in our packets. Need a motion for that?
I have a question, we accept personnel appointments?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded that we accept the personnel appointments. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hand. That's nine, none opposed. And the next one is out of district transfer requests. And we had a list of that in our packet also. Need a motion for that?
Some of, we accept the administration's recommendation to grant these people transfer.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the out of district transfer request as presented. Any other discussion? All those in favor, agree? All right, none opposed, set. Okay, so now we're on to section C for discussion. And we're gonna start with student testing and instruction. Mr. Lawrence?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. By way of introduction to this topic, I've asked Ms. Olin to provide a short presentation. I think you're gonna find it very informative and, and a good catalyst for, for the next hour of discussion.
He told me 20 minutes. So I'm just gonna make that, make that clear. But I'm on a committee. There we go, thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members, Superintendent Lawrence and colleagues and other stakeholders for sharing some time, you know, with me tonight to discuss our assessment initiatives here in Aiken County. I've been a measurement person for 25 years, so obviously it's very near and dear to my heart. I think it's very important and it's a really hot topic. It's a hot topic nationally, at our state, locally. I don't know if anybody saw the, the Washington was at the Post, I think on Sunday had a huge article in. Wow, all the states, you know, got rid of testing this year, so we can do without it. And all I can think of is I'm really mourning the loss of that data and information that we're gonna have next year to guide instruction. So the intent tonight was not to get too deep into the weeds. Last year we created a very nice infographic that detailed our assessments. Today I wanna talk more kind of about our system of assessment and, let me see if I can get this. What would I do without Dr. Foster? First of all, it starts with our mission. If you, I'm just highlighting a couple areas of our mission statement. We wanna create future-ready students. Each student will acquire the knowledge, skills and dispositions to pursue learning throughout life. Each student will complete high school, prepared to thrive in college, career and life. And so we talk about these things, well, how will we know when we get there? What will it look like? So our assessment system is divine to, you know, to guide that and to help us answer those questions. So today I wanna talk to some basic assessment vocabulary, some key terms and metrics that are somewhat new in the world of education. When I say that, I mean the last 10 to 20 years. And to give you an overview of our assessment system, how we use the assessment data and then kind of how does it all fit in? So what is assessment? Basically, and quite simply, it's the process of gathering critical information to inform decision-making. And we can assess a lot of different things. We can assess student achievement. We can assess our curriculum. We can, we can, we get feedback. It's not just all about giving a student a test. We collect different types of assessment information in different ways. Our goal in Aiken County is to have a balanced and comprehensive assessment system. And when I say balanced, a lot of people think, you know, what does that mean, a balance? Okay, we're gonna have an equal number of assessments at kindergarten, second grade, third grade. It does not mean that. It means that we're gonna have a balance of information to inform all our different stakeholders. The South Carolina Department of Education needs certain information. Our content and curriculum specialists need certain information. Our parents need information. U.S. board members need information. And so it's, it's a balance of that information. In the past, many will tell you that in Aiken County, we didn't, ours wasn't too balanced. We had a lot of very summative information that we got from the end of year testing. And then we had teacher-created tests, but that didn't funnel up to the district level. So we kind of like would wait all year and get to the summative data and say, well, how did we do? And so before I get too deep, too deep into that, people call summative data sometimes autopsy data. I've heard that. I don't believe it's autopsy data, but the truth is that it is done and finished. Learning is over when we get those results, usually in July, and all of a sudden we're starting back in August. So a good assessment system has a balance of formative, interim and summative. So if we look at formative assessment, formative administered very frequently, often by a teacher in the classroom. It is, can be as simple as thumbs up, thumbs down. I sometimes look at my emails and I say, boy, that's kind of a formative assessment when I say, does that make sense? Are questioning strategies in the classroom, all different ways to elicit evidence of student understanding. Then we have in a balanced assessment system, interim assessments. Those kind of in the middle of the road, format is happening daily, sometimes minute by minute in the classroom. And formative, I always, I like to say, it informs instruction. We take that information and put it right back in that feedback, boot that feedback loop so we can act on it very quickly. Interim in Aiken County is primarily our benchmark system. Align to our end-of-year assessments and our learning standards so that we can make sure that, you know, at the end of year, there are no surprises. We know how kids are gonna do. We have an aligned assessment. And I have a graphic to show you in just a minute. And then we have our summative measures. End-of-year course in algebra, biology, FC ready, pass, those kind of, I know those are all familiar to you. So we talked about that pretty much, formative, informs instruction, continuous cycle in the classroom. Teachers are very familiar with this. It's very descriptive in nature. Summative is at the opposite end of that spectrum. Used to make evaluative decisions. Did the student learn? Was the program effective? Was the curriculum effective? So different purposes for those kind of assessments. Next, I wanna talk about some really critical units of measurement and some they may be familiar to you and others may not be. And that is the lexile and the quantile. Lexile, both are developed by Metometrics. But lexile is a unit of measurement that tells us a student's reading ability. It's not only reading ability, but it also allows us to align resources and text materials with a student's reading ability. For example, I can go to a Scholastic book fair at one of our schools. I have a neat little app on my phone and I find mom or dad, I can take a picture of that with my cellphone, the cue code. And I can see that that lexile is 1,100. If my student's reading it at 800, lexile level, probably it's a little bit high. We wanna get in that sweet spot typically about 50 above, 50 below lexile to make sure that a student is comprehending what they're reading. Lexile is typically about 75% comprehension, that a student is, you know, comprehending about 75% of that material. So lexile's very, very important to us and we'll talk about that again in a minute. We talk about text demand. For the last 20 years, people have been studying text demand. Williamson is one that has studied it a lot. And basically it takes different, you know, text reading materials and, and looking at the syntax, the word length, the sentence structure. It says, what is the demand to read that? And then links it, so we can see most newspapers, reading the newspaper requires about a 1,200 lexile. Military training, to take the SAT and ACT, about an 1180 lexile. When we move on to kind of citizenship and being a productive and informed citizen, completing your tax forms, applications for student loans, all of these different things. You know, reading the instructions to install your child's car seat. They require certain text demand and we want to ensure that students have those. Every business occupation has a text demand. You know, from reading manuals, just because you're, you know, whether you go to college or not, it doesn't mean that you don't need to be reading at a certain reading ability 'cause you, if you're gonna be a plumber or an electrician, you have, you know, trade manuals that you have to read and comprehend. So text demand is, is very important. Next comes quantile. It's quite similar except for it's the numeracy measure. Quantile's a little bit different and it tells you what the student is ready to learn. For example, the quantile map is a framework of all skills and concepts. And every South Carolina standard has an associated, or concept has an associated quantile. So we know we're teaching numbers and operations, so I'll just take an example. And that could be at like an 800 quantile. If we know the student is, only has a quantile of about a 600, they're not prepared to learn that concept yet. So we need to backtrack and work on certain foundational skills so that we can ensure that they're successful. So quantile and lexile are very important. Lexile's been around longer than quantile. I would say Aiken County's been kind of an early adopter of quantile. We had Metometrics come in and have folks trained about a year and a half before the state mandated and entered the partnership with Metometrics on quantile. And I tell people, and when I'm at my Testing and Accountability Roundtable, they're like, you're very lucky because we have a measure for both lexile and quantile. Most districts have for lexile, but not all have it for quantile. So we're grateful for that, Aiken County. The other thing that's changed in education is how we approach our course planning. It used to be very instructor-centered. Now it's, it's student-centered. We don't say anymore, okay, we're gonna choose the textbook and then work down. We start at the very end and we call it backwards design. What is it that a student should know or be able to do by the time they finish? Whether it be a course or anything else. So that's where we start in Aiken County. We start with when a student graduates from high school in Aiken County. What is it that they should know or be able to do? And so there's kind of four critical, you know, primary components in Aiken County. First of all, we want them to master the profile of the South Carolina graduate. Those are the knowledge and skills and basically the mastery of the South Carolina learning standards. They're extensive, K through 12, every course has them. That's the content. Next, we want, we strive for a minimum of a 1,300 lexile upon graduation, which would allow a student to pursue post-secondary education if he or she chose that. You know, will all kids make that 1,300? No, unfortunately they don't. Many surpass it, but that is our goal so a student can pursue, you know, post-secondary or for all those other reasons, can be an active and participating citizen, is capable of reading the newspaper, technical manuals, et cetera. We strive for them to be able to engage in mathematics at about a 1,350 quantile. So we know that's our end in mind. We know that's what we want a student to do. Next, we want them to be college and career-ready. Our accountability system in, in South Carolina only talks about. Our accountability system in, in South Carolina only talks about being one or the other, but our goal is for them to be both, college and career-ready. And what that means on the college side is that they obtain an ACT of a 20 or higher or an SAT of 10, 20 or higher. And we give in, in South Carolina, all, just 11th grade students an option to take the ACT or the SAT, which the state, you know, pays for. Or they can take an advanced placement class with a, and obtain a score of a 3 or higher. Typically, the 3 is what a college accepts for college credit. Or participate in six hours of dual enrollment. Those are the four ways a student can indicate that they're college-ready. Or career-ready. The ASFAB of a 31 or higher, that's the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery. Typically, what if someone takes it they're interested in pursuing a military career. 31 is the minimum score to qualify for career-ready. They can earn a silver or higher certificate on the WIN. It used to be Work Keys, a WIN certificate. And again, every junior student has the option to take that, and we prepare them for that. They can be a career and technology education completer, or they can complete a registered apprenticeship, one that's registered with South Carolina. So there's those four ways. So we know that's what we want. A student, by the time they leave, to have mastered these things. So if we take a minute and kind of try to put it all together. On the right side, you'll see that is the profile of the South Carolina graduate. The, the metrics that we use to identify if they're college or career-ready. And we want them to engage in mathematics at about a 1,350 quantile and engage in literacy about a 1,300 lexile. So that's where we want them to be by the time they finish 12th grade, over on the bottom right-hand corner. So using backwards design and plan backwards. We know that at the end of the year, they have to take certain tests to ensure that they've mastered South Carolina state standards. That's up in the upper right corner, SC ready, SC pass, and of course, assessments. So we align our formative assessments in Aitken County to those assessments. Three times a year, we have benchmarks in the fall, winter, and spring. We also monitor students' quantile and lexile three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. So if you look down, and you know, to use a simple example, we just don't want to start in kindergarten and, or third grade and hope that they're going to get at that 1,300 or 1,350. We want to ensure that they're there, so we're going to monitor that. And we have certain targets and our teachers and administrators. And increasingly, our parents are becoming very aware of our lexile and quantile. We say, know it and grow it. We want all students in Aitken County to know their lexile and, and their parents to know it and monitor it and, and know it and grow it. So we have targets, each, end-of-year targets for each of those, those two measures. Common formative assessments is kind of our, our little placeholder. It kind of falls between. They're not required in Aitken County, but we make them available. And our content interventionists work very hard to ensure that they're well-aligned. And that's kind of a middle, a middle spot. We have, you know, the benchmarks are, are the bigs three times a year. And in between, the CFAs are kind of just pulse checks. Did a student master this? Designed to, you know, A, to save teachers' time, but also to provide a common assessment so we can funnel up that information and C, what curriculum changes that we need to make. So that's kind of how that fits together. This is, this is another depiction of the quantile. If we, you know, visual, you know, just depiction where we want to start to ensure that student, by the time that they graduate, CCR is, falls in that, you know, college and career-ready range for quantile. Similarly, lexile. We talked about some of those metrics. University in red, community college, 1,295. Citizenship, 1,230. Or military, approximately 1,180. So what, you know, where does this fit into our, our continuous improvement of student learning? So this graphic, you know, just kind of shows you how we approach it. We begin with the end in mind. We decide what we want a student to know or to be able to do. We develop the measures. And then for us in Aitken County, it's a continuous feedback loop of collecting and analyzing the data associated with it. And it's not just test data. We do it many different ways. We survey our, our teachers regularly. We ask them about assessments, their use of assessments. We, and I'm going to give you some of the specific examples around here. But, you know, if we don't measure, it's very difficult to know if we've really improved. So we use that. In Aitken County, we use the Balanced Scorecard. We implemented it several years ago. And it's not just our, our student achievement data. It's aligned to our strategic plan, all of our major indicators of our organizational health, whether they be fiscal, human resources, obviously, student learning is a big part of it. We monitor all those indicators on one chart so we don't lose sight of what's important. And we can quickly look at a graphic and say, wow, what do we, what happened here? We, we have to do that or, on really great days, we can see our improvements. So one of the things that we do, and unfortunately, this year, we won't be able to because we didn't do our, our end-of-year assessments, but we examine our, our benchmarks. Our teacher and content interventionist-created benchmark exams to say, are they aligned with SC, you know, ready, pass, our end-of-year assessments? And we're happy to report over the last few years that our correlations have gotten very, very strong in, in all areas. You can see that they all fall in the strong to very strong range. So these are internally-developed benchmarks designed to be aligned with our curriculum. Again, beginning with the end in mind, what we want a student to know or be able to do, those, you know, mastering those South Carolina standards and then moving backwards.
What are your correlation? What, what are your correlation?
Correlation? Correlation between our internally-developed benchmarks and the end-of-year state assessments. Another thing we do is, and we usually pick a couple of things each year that we're going to examine as part of our planning process. This year, we looked at a couple, a couple of areas. One was F and P. We surveyed all elementary teachers about the use of the Fana Sempinow. And I just wanted to show you some examples of some of the things that we are asking them. Do they feel it's an accurate and reliable tool to identify instructional and independent reading levels? And we take this feedback and, you know, when we get to, and we can see here, it was over 75% agree or strongly agree that it is an accurate and reliable tool. But we can go down and say, who disagrees? Who strongly disagrees? What notes do they put on it? Why are they feeling that way? Is there a grade level that, that seems to think, you know, you know, one way a little bit more strongly than, than others? So we continually kind of dive deep to take a look at that. You know, do they use it to make instructional decisions? We certainly don't want to give any kind of assessment if we're not going to use the data. And that is the ultimate guidepost in, in, on my watch in Aitken County. That if we're going to give an assessment, we are going to use that data. So we ask them if they're using it to make instructional decisions. We ask them about the time it takes. You know, if, if they feel it's a worthwhile investment of the time. If, or it's important for moving forward. We want to know if they're well-trained and supported. That's really important. Are they, do they have, you know, the resources and the tools that they need to be effective? We ask them about our common formative assessments the last couple of years to just ensure that we're aligned. How many times are they using them? If teachers aren't using them, then we're probably not. We're glad over the last few years that, you know, we have so many, so many more teachers that are using them. They use them a couple of times a year, three to five, greater than five times a year. Do they, are they doing what they're intended to do? Give them a quick pulse on student learning. We want that feedback. Are they, are they well-aligned? Do teachers feel that they're well-aligned with curriculum and pacing? We want to know that, too. Do they save you time? You know, because that's what they're designed to. Save it, you know, a teacher, every time a teacher, and good test development and assessment development, it's hard work. And, you know, to create a good test. And so we're glad that teachers feel that they save them time in developing their own. Why reinvent the wheel? We ask them about benchmark debriefings. Three times a year, we debrief on our benchmark exams. We want to know if, if those debriefings are important to their, are they giving them information that they could put in their feedback loop to improve teaching and learning in their classroom? And we do internal progress monitoring regularly. This is an example, just two things I picked. You know, three times a year, teachers debrief on benchmarks, admin debrief, we debrief all the time in instructional services. We look at, you know, where we are by grade level, by school. The far right graph is, is lexile progress. You know, how are we, we know where we need to be in the spring. Where were we in the fall? Where were we in the winter? And we don't just look at it by grade level. We look at it, you know, down by every school, too, so we can see where the gaps are and we can shift resources if there's a school that needs more help than others. On the left, I know you know about, you know, we report data out on who does not meet expectations, whose approach is expectation, who meets, who succeeds. But we take a lot more data. And so sometimes when people say that summative data is autopsy data because there's not anything we can do about it. It's true, it's after the fact. But we take that information and we look at all the learning strands. This particular one was grade five, expressions, equations, and inequalities. There's five deep strands in, in all the math strands from two to eight. So we can look. And we say, wow, we really fell down in data analysis and statistics. Or, gosh, our numeracy in third grade wasn't what we wanted to be. What do we got to do? What do we got to tweak in our curriculum maps to make sure that that's better? We look at 10 different strands in English Language Arts. Text-dependent analysis, we don't only just look at the data, we look at no data because we can tell a student is, text-dependent analysis, we have students that don't get a score on it. Why didn't they get a score? We can dig deep and find they didn't write enough. They just repeated the question. So we analyzed that data, started that a couple of years ago. In each of the last two years, we were able to find, you know, that we improved the number of students who got zero, you know, reduced. And that's what we wanted. They weren't writing enough. Text-dependent analysis is critical for students to be able to read, close-read a passage, elicit the evidence, and then write a strong, you know, coherent argument and, and defensible information. And they get a score on that. So if they're not getting any points on the board, how can we just get them on the board and then work to improve them year over year? So how do we use our assessment results? There are so many ways. I can't even begin, but we use the annual summative data, as I said. It's not just about who meets or exceeds, but drilling down into that deep data to see the information that we can put in. How many students scored low in the strand? How many students scored in the middle? How many students scored high? And look at year-over-year results, the quarterly debriefings I mentioned, our balanced scorecard. Lowest quantile the last couple of years. We've taken, we take all our data files and we find the lowest 20% in every school and every grade level. We know that the new accountability system has, you know, a points associated with it. It's not just about your overall achievement. Are we moving our lowest learners? So knowing who those students are in our buildings at the beginning of the year is very important. So, you know, everybody gets a list, and so they know in their building, you know, who is in that lowest quantile and who needs to move up. Our analytics system. We, the last couple of years, have been working on analytics systems that all our data files feed into that. And our administrators can quickly go through our student information center to build different visualizations and dashboards based on, you know, student's population, student subgroup, et cetera. So it's very easily accessible to them. Analysis of strand data, our general accountability results, our three times a year benchmark debriefings with all our teachers. Curriculum work. We take all the information, feed it into, into the curriculum team's summer work. Our school-based leadership teams that meet to, you know, do basic problem solving. They're taking, we use data for that. Our MTSS initiatives, just general goal-setting. Our school renewal plans, everything. We have that data and we can say, hey, you know, we want to, you know, move this metric next year. Strategic planning, parent-teacher conferences. We talk about them. Where students are with their lexile, quantile, what they can be doing at home to improve that. So we use that. Then we, we had talked a lot recently about, you know, assessment and how much we're testing. And so I just tried to do a little quick, this is an elementary kind of pass. So if you look at our infographic, it looks like a lot of, you know, different assessments that we have. But it's important that we look at, at a, at a grade level. What does a grade, a student in a particular grade level participate in? And we have, you know, our formative assessments. Those are elective that we choose to give, aligned with end-of-year. We have certain required elements by the state as part of our accountability system and some that are offered. So for example, I use this kind of basically, I took an instructional day. You know, for elementary students, start at 7:30, goes to 2:30, subtracted lunch, recess, you know, the few minutes that you're starting your day, packing up dismissal, getting on the bus, and came up with approximately 365 instructional minutes. And then I took our data files. Most of our data files are timestamped, SC ready, pass, can tell when a student began the test and when they finished the test. And could come up with some averages there. We have certain tests that, if you look at kindergarten readiness assessment, Fana Sempinow are two that fall into an observational assessment. For a student, for the most part, they don't know that they're participating in the assessment. It's kind of benign to them. F and P is guided one-on-one reading. A teacher sits down and just listens to a student read. The student doesn't know that's an assessment. The kindergarten readiness assessment that is required by state law, a large part of that is observational, but 17 items are not. Those 17 items take about 30 minutes for a student to sit down and, and take that test. So just kind of added all those at each grade level and then did some basic math. And so kind of on average, our, over the course of the year, 1.2% of our instructional time is consumed with testing. That does not include teacher-created tests. This is only formative assessments required by the district and then end-of-year testing. So that's, I know that's kind of a lot of information, but I really wanted to just give you an overview that we do have a plan and we have a feedback loop. We, the last thing we ever want to do is administer an assessment for the sake of administering assessment. We, you know, I spend most of my day analyzing data and pushing it out to, you know, principals, teachers, whatever, our instructional services team so that they have fresh data and they can, you know, put it in that feedback loop. So with that said, do you have any questions?
What are the numbers?
Sir?
I can't read the charts.
Okay, certainly.
What are the numbers?
Okay, so I'm. Yes, they're minutes, sir.
It's been 6,000, 65,700 minutes?
Those are the annual minutes available to us.
For all children or what?
Instructional minutes in the day.
Oh, that's, that's your total?
Yes, if, if I were to take 100 and, yes, sir.
There's been 30 of those doing kindergarten there.
That's correct. So let's, because kindergarten is very lightly tested, so let's look at.
Would read the drawing?
Second or third grade. Reading inventory takes about 45 minutes. Math inventory takes longer. So, you know, 91.2 minutes. Benchmarks, 195 minutes through the course of the year. The COGAT Iowa test, which is required by state law, identifies students for gifted and talented programs, but we also use that data. That is over a few-day period that they administer that. So that's what I just did. Added those up, got the total minutes, and did the math based on the available instructional minutes in the day, deducting for those things that I mentioned.
Are you going to talk to us about what these tests are?
What I.
I'll give you to the board.
Yes.
I've never heard of these tests. Because they came along, all of these, I know the Iowa's not, but all, all these others made by the state?
They're not made by the state. Most of them are all nationally normed assessments.
They are?
They are, yes, sir. Our teacher-created ones, obviously, our benchmarks aren't nationally normed, but we, I showed you those correlations, they're well correlated. And what I did, and I didn't bring it tonight, but I'm happy to share it with you, is I, in addition to our infographic, which is available on our website, which shows each grade level, each task, I created just a Word document that gives every single assessment and the, you know, what it measures, who receives it, approximately how long it takes, and if it's required by state.
Where is it?
I have it on my computer.
Where can I get it?
I will give it to Mr. Lawrence tomorrow and he'll be sure to get it to you.
Is it readily available to the public board?
No, if you go to the acpsd.net/oaA, all this information is out there. Balanced scorecard, all our annual report cards, all information about tasks, parents, resources, is all available on the website as well, sir.
Yeah, and this is kind of just the beginning of discussion, right? Because this is one of our goals. So if there's other things that we want to come back to us, we can have more discussion. I mean, that was kind of the idea.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Jackson, go ahead.
Thank you. I will come.
Sure.
I apologize.
Okay, it's okay.
Okay. Going into next school year without having the data from the end of last school year, how will we as a district start or help support teachers and students? What measurements will be used to assess where students are at that time? And when will they be assessed? How soon after school?
Well, one of the things that the state is, first of all, is deciding on soon is those five extra days. And those are designed specifically to get kids in so that we can do the assessments. And we'll start with reading inventory and math inventory first. We'll want to see how much, you know, learning loss that we had over the summer so that we can, you know, make those instructional plans for those students immediately. But we plan on bringing all kids in as early as possible to begin those assessments.
Including special resource students?
Yes.
Mr. Crane?
Mr. Crane, I'm sorry. Good. Thank you for the presentation. Very informative, very, very good. Real quick, quick, simple question. On this particular slide, can you put together a sort of a time breakdown beyond elementary school for us?
Certainly.
Or is that already available on the website?
Yeah, it does tell you like X times per year. It does give you that, but I could do it in this format if it's easier, a little matrix.
If you would mind, if it's easy, I would mind saying...
Happy to do it.
I think the infogram that I've seen before was really good as well. I don't know if we can put that back out.
Yeah, it's, again, it is on our website. It is o/oaA, acpsd.net/oaA.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Nestle and then Mr. Moulton?
Mr. Moulton, go first.
Okay. Mr. Moulton?
First of all, thank you. I think it's very, very clear the way you presented everything. I looked at the infogram that Mr. Crane mentioned as well. I'm very interested in this. This is something I was interested in when I tried to run for being on the school board. But the things that I would kind of, you know, like to see is, do the teachers see this information that we're seeing tonight? And the reason I ask that, when I go get feedback from teachers, they still feel like they're, this is saying 1.4% is the highest amount of testing we're doing on the available time. They tell me, we're testing, 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 testing. So I'd just like, you know, for them to understand that, you know, is this what they also see?
I can't think of anything on here that hasn't been shared with teachers. You know, the education on Lexile, I think that we are really have mastered that comprehensively. Quantile, we have trained every single math teacher. They understand the quantile metrics, they know all this information. Getting them to use it and embrace it in the classroom is a little bit longer of a cycle. But I can't think of, I know all the, you know, we don't often share all of our information to the teacher level. We do share it at the principal level. So the survey results that were about F and P went out to principals. And what happens is they cascade it down to their teachers, they discuss it at faculty meetings, et cetera. And I know, I go out to lots of faculty meetings, you know, to talk about our accountability system, our metrics, Lexile, quantile, probably 10 or 12 a year. So I know information is also getting out that way, but principal is the primary pipeline.
Mr. Nestle?
Yeah, thank you. So first thing, so you had a nice chart there about the correlation between the interim formative assessments to the state summative assessments, I think is what it was. So is there any correlation between letter grades, teacher tests, and the state summative assessments?
We have casually looked at that data informally, but one of the reasons we're really excited about the new analytics system that is now available at the principal level and to the teacher level is you can easily bring in student grades and state assessment data and, you know, reading inventory and math inventory and one easy visualization. And if you have grade inflation, it shows, it's crystal clear.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious if it would make sense to me that the tests that teachers are giving would correlate? If it didn't, there was a problem?
The, well, teacher-created tests, we don't monitor. If we have, you know, 1,600 teachers, it's very difficult for them to, you know, but our common formative assessments, our benchmark assessments, the ones that are created and are used widely, those are the ones we're monitoring the correlations of. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am. So tell me a little bit more about, so I noticed on one of your slides, one of the uses of the data for the benchmark assessments was the debriefings. How's that work? What is a debriefing?
A debriefing is a time where typically through a PLC, professional learning community, grade level team comes together with the principal, the content interventionist, and all the benchmark data is analyzed and looked at to see how did kids do? Where did they fall down? Next year with our assessment system, not only will we have, you know, the summary data, but we'll have an item analysis that we can do on a specific item on a test to say, gosh, 90% of the kids miss this. What's up? Is it just a bad question? Or did I not teach that well? And that's information that's gathered through those benchmarks that is input back into that feedback loop. And then teachers may, you know, start goal planning from there. What can they immediately do to impact instruction based on that information? What did a student miss? What did, you know, they fell down on? What are the biggest gaps? Conversely, what did they do really well in? We won't focus on that. And we do that three times a year because we don't want it to be a surprise at the end of the year when state assessments come around. We, you know, have data points now that we can monitor three times a year and we can impact that much earlier than if we waited.
And our, so I noticed on the survey for F and P, folks who have responded felt really well-trained and supported. So as far as the benchmarks, I assume teachers, all teachers are trained to interpret those results?
That's what a big portion of the benchmark debriefings is. And this is now our third year of debriefings. So they've gotten used to, initially, I think there was little, I don't want to say resentment, but they were just like, oh, you know, it took up the time. But now we find that they embrace those times and the information that it provides them, you know, quickly to impact instruction.
Okay. And the one thing, I'm sorry. So a couple of things. So going into this next school year, would we expect like thresholds or targets to be adjusted considering we missed the, basically the last quarter of the school year? Do we have like a different start line?
No, we don't have a different start line. We still know that by the end, now, maybe we have to adjust that, but we're a student, we want a student to be on their Lexile or their quantile for the year. We want to make sure that they're on track, you know, if we go back to that graphic, that we want to make sure that they're at a 13 or a 1350 in quantile and Lexile by the time they graduate. So, you know, we don't want to just cut that short and say, oh, wow, we lost a quarter of a year. So we're going to have to, you know, get that information and we're going to have to make up for lost time.
And just, I'm like Dr. Bradley, I'm learning. Do we issue like, do benchmark assessments go into the grades for students or are they just assessments?
They're just assessments. They're formative assessments. And we've had a lot of discussion about that. High schools, sometimes they say, we want to use it for a grade. The nature of it was not intended to be used as a grade, it's just to inform instruction and to make, you know, mid-year modifications and revisions that need to be made. But some people really do strongly want a grade that hasn't been our, hasn't been our, intentionally has not been what we've done in the past.
Okay. And just in the future, so as we continue to learn about this subject, one thing I'd like to see added is I'd just like to understand, what does it cost the district to do the assessments?
Certainly, I can do that as well. The majority of our assessments are paid for out of state funds. State covers those, that's ACT, SAT, NMSQT, which all 10th graders get, kindergarten readiness assessment, SC Ready Pass, COGAT Iowa. Our internally, obviously with the exception of time and salaries, our benchmarks are internally created. We do pay for reading inventory and math inventory through HMH. Farnes and Penau is resources and leveled readers, it's not really an, you know, assessment that we have to pay for that has consumables, et cetera. It's just, we have the materials. So the majority of our assessments are paid for by the state, but I can certainly add those to the thing.
It'd just be good to have, I appreciate it.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson, Mr. Silas, and then Dr. Bradley.
Okay. How will students who choose full-time virtual learning be assessed, being that they will have no supervision or monitoring?
Okay, so, you know, our intent is to improve our one-to-one capabilities. And like most other areas, we have, you know, lockdown browsers that are used. Many of our assessments have those built in to that particular assessment. But we'll have, we have already examined in four or five different resources that are going to be put on the initial build and pushed out. So a student, if they did have a device, could as well test at home.
So I'd like to elaborate on Mr. Moulton's question a little bit. And what we hear from teachers or from the school level, folks, is if the percentage of time for testing in the chart you show here seems so low, why is it that you think we hear that from teachers and people at the schools that so much time is being spent on testing? Now, those are general comments, right? These are numbers.
Right.
So why do you think there's such a discrepancy in that perception and what you're, you know, what you're... I'm not disputing what you're perceiving at all. Why do you think there's a discrepancy?
I don't know. I can only, I can speculate a little bit. My sense would be that perhaps particularly for a long-term teacher in our district, some of these things are new over the last three, four years. Benchmarks are new. As I mentioned, our assessment system wasn't quite balanced. We only had summative data, wanted to get post-checks on where our student was with Lexile and quantile and to make sure that they were on track for end-of-year state assessments. So we've implemented some new assessments over the last four or five years. And there could be some resentment. People don't, they don't value the numbers, I would say, that would maybe result in some pushback. I think it's a continual process of educating people always, and we, you know, we do that a few times a year, share the data, the information, how it's being used. I hope in some small way this was helpful to you and perhaps that we can, you know, answer, you can help answer the constituency's questions better.
Definitely, I think it is, and appreciate it a lot. Just a couple more quick things. I'm all for value-added testing. I think we all are, right? And you've been in the numbers 25 years, so I think it would be hard to convince you that you need less numbers to evaluate, you know, students. But it's the balance that we've got to strike. And I wonder what value the teachers have for a lot of these. I want to tell a quick story. Do any of school board members remember maybe the conference before last, the superintendent of the year and the story he told? Yeah, can I tell that one quick? I think it...
That's good.
I think it's very relatable and it kind of sums up maybe my thinking. And I know we have to measure, believe me. Manufacturing, you got to test, you got to measure, you got to see where you are. I'll tell my version of it. I'm sure it's not exactly right. Yeah, I'll keep it clean. So this is the superintendent of the year, spoke at a school board conference, and he talked about, you know, that there was an abundance of hog farmers in the state. I think his father might have been one. And they had a conference and it was a lot of discussion, you know, over what people were doing right and wrong and how they were managing their farm. And a lot of them had questions for this one, you know, older farmer says, you know, why is it that your hogs are always the biggest and you, you know, bring the most money and you're so successful? And he said, well, you know, while you guys are weighing your hogs three times a day, I'm feeding mine. And I think that just kind of sums up, and I'm sure some of you probably heard that before, but it is pretty telling, I think, of where we need to find that balance of feeding our kids and measuring them.
Right. Well, I agree that there is a balance. I just think that we just can't hope that we're going to get there, you know, to that outcome that we want without monitoring it. So it's, I don't think it's elusive. I do think as, especially as we move maybe to more online learning, I think there's rooms for more portfolio assessments, things like that, where we can demonstrate skills, demonstrate, you know, writing abilities and things like that. I don't think state summative testing is going to go away. I think it's too important. I think the state has done a really good job of changing our assessments. You know, they moved to a vertical scale score a couple of years ago, so helpful in analyzing year over year. But I do agree with you, it's a continuous process of educating people and showing them how we're using the data and trying to address their concerns. But administering assessment and not using the data or not putting it in that feedback loop, that's not acceptable. So we'll continue to ask teachers questions to make sure that we, you know, are collecting that information. Because we collect it annually. We put out a professional development survey each year. This year we have like 1,700 responses, you know, which is a lot for our district. We, you know, get it on professional development, CFAs, F and P, all the different things that we use. So if we see gaps, then we look at that data and we dig deeper.
Dr. Bradley, Mr. Smith, and Mr. Crane?
Before I get into my agenda, let me take a shot at Brian's question.
Okay. Just make sure that everyone can hear you, Dr. Bradley.
I think it's on, did that this time?
You got it now.
In my other life, I ran the district's testing program for 21 years. And back in the seventies, we implemented something called ACAP, the Aiken County Prescriptive Assessment Program. And it was rebellion. You know, I was the assistant superintendent of instruction and I thought I was going to get fired because of the teacher uprising about the implementation of that kind of assessment. And I thought a lot about it and what it did is we developed criteria for each course. The teachers got together and we said, what do we want the children to learn or the students to learn in each of course? And we listed those and they then told teachers, you got, this is what you have to teach. I've been teaching for 15 years, I've been teaching for 30 years, I know what my children need, I know what my students need. Because before that, teachers got the textbook that was adopted, went to the classroom, shut the door, and that was it. They taught what they wanted to teach. The principal went in and watched them twice, three times a year for about 30 minutes to make sure they did what they were doing. But there was no effort to control content. And teachers are very skilled people and they admire their own autonomy. They want their autonomy and they believe that they're professionals and they believe that they don't really need to have to conform to all these standards and so forth and so forth, which were basically political in nature originally. The accountability thing about schools aren't doing what they're supposed to do, so we got to make them do that and we're going to put in all these tests to monitor them. And then this was pushback against that, which they should have been. So I think that's a big part of it, is that it's a threat to the professionalism of teachers when they are having to do dance to somebody else's music. And this is a way of checking whether or not they're doing that. And I understand it, but in the same token, we do have to have some uniformated curriculum and we have to have everybody sort on the same page. That's my reading.
Yes, sir.
I don't think it takes too much time. You know, but I'll say they're doing that. I don't think it takes too much time, you know, but I'll say they're doing that thing that is just a thing that you can focus on and say, I'm really unhappy with having to do this. And I never particularly liked being evaluated. I didn't like the teachers making me take all those tests I had to take when I was a student. But I'm sure they would defend that, you know, because that's their test.
Right.
And I'm not an anti-teacher. I learned a lot of this from my mother, who's a teacher for 50 years, and my wife, who taught at Aiken High School for 27 years, and aunts and uncles. So I love teaching. But there is a little element of, you know, I still agree about having to take up, having to do all these tests. Back to my question. Can we tell how we're doing? Do you do an analysis that tells us where we are nationally? Can our kids read, can Aiken County seniors read as good as California seniors?
So we find whatever national indicators we can. We examine like SAT, ACT, abstract strand data, because we can see, how did Aiken County kids do, how did they do versus students in the state? I'm sorry, sir?
Those tests aren't designed to measure that.
Oh, they give good...
The load on those tests is mostly like IQ test.
Are you talking about reading specifically?
Yeah, yeah, can they read as well? I mean...
Well, that's why we like Lexile and Quantile, they're nationally normed measures.
But the SAT is designed as a college admissions test, and it's not intended for every student in a grade to take.
That's true.
It's intended for bright kids who want to go to college to take. And one of the things that we had to fight constantly is that when you start requiring all your children to take it, and then they're going to compare with Iowa, where 3% of the kids take the test, you're going to look pretty darn bad.
And we fight that in South Carolina.
Exactly. So, but you know, if we were given a comprehensive test of basic skills, which is a nationally normed test, we could tell where, we got a national percentile, state percentile, and local percentile. So we knew where the kids were on each of the things that were being measured there. You don't have that kind of data available.
We have it with COGAT, we have it with Iowa, we have it with Quantile, we have it with Lexile.
Yeah, but the Quantile and Lexile is, there's no specific test to that, is there?
There is, yeah. That's, we're internally using reading inventory and math inventory, and they have national norms that we can compare to. This is not a, not a state assessment, it's a nationally normed Lexile and Quantile are national. So yes, we compare, and that's where we pull those 1,300 and 1,350.
I think what I'm really struggling with here about this whole thing is absence of knowledge about the test.
Yeah.
I mean, the whole testing program is only as good as the test if you...
That's correct.
And you're talking great to me, because I, you know, I studied testing for years, read textbooks on testing, and I never heard of all this stuff. And when you talk about South Carolina, hey, I said, yeah, South Carolina ready and benchmarks, that, the only one up there that I've ever heard of is the COGAT.
COGAT Iowa, yeah.
Yeah. And so I don't have a feel for whether we're wasting time or what, because I don't even know what you're doing, I don't know what you're making, what kind of...
Tonight was designed to give you kind of an overview and...
I'm not going to include...
Oh, that's fine, is it?
My struggle is abhorrent, I'm trying to get information so that I can make intelligent decisions, or even give intelligent answers to people who come to me and complain about having to take all these tests, is I really need to know specifically what we're doing. And it's not that I don't trust you, King, or anybody on your staff, I'm sure you're doing exactly what you should be doing, and think what you're doing is great. But I'm having to take, you're working 15 times a move in order to be able to argue that point. And I would feel more comfortable if I hadn't even seen one of the tests.
Well, I'm happy, like I said, to get you that information. It's already prepared, I'll get it to Mr. Lawrence, and he'll forward that to you.
Yeah, I'd really to interact about, if we're hands-on a little bit, maybe at least to get a better feel about what's going on than just to have...
Yeah.
Right.
I've been taking some notes, so after we're done with the questions, I was going to make a suggestion, and that was one of the things, is maybe to have a session on the description of the assessments, too.
Let me sit down and you give me the test, except I'll only answer about you, I...
So, good, Mr. Smith, and then Mr. Crane, and then Mr. Nessel, Mr. Moulton.
I was in the daycare, exactly what he was saying. We went through some tough times, teachers were quitting, retiring, they refused, they refused to do this, that. But I also want to come back to the teaching time, the 1.4, 1.1. I know this, and I want to speak to one other thing. I had an old administrator, when I first got into administration, because I was scared to death of the testing, and I was down heading to school, I was scared of it, I didn't understand it real well. One of my old friends in administration, Mr. Ed Watkins, told me, he said, the best way to learn why is to administer the test. And once I did that, I got caught over what was going on. But as I just whispered there, you got to really be able to put hands on it, like Bradley said, to really understand and get the grasp of it. I want to go back now to this. Only 1.4% of that 65,700 hours is on actual testing. Here's where a lot of teachers, a lot of people in our district, used to, and I can't see it change now, that wasn't so much the problem.
Fair.
What the problem was, was all the hours spent preparing to give that test when they needed to be working on what their daily instruction was. When you put that in, the teacher's going to look at that and say, uh-huh. But you've got to understand, and I understand this, all of us need, I said, you have to go through that. But in their minds, they're, they're folding that into part of the testing, and that's the way it used to be. It's a part of the animal, we've got to deal with that. Testing, I'm all for testing, because as a building administrator, that was my, that was my safety net. Because if I knew testing, and I knew what was going to be tested, I knew then I could go into my teachers' classrooms and make sure they were teaching what the expectations were. Thus, that became my safety net, because then I was in control of what was happening to me and my students. And you know, administrators that don't realize that, realize that in person. Testing is a wonderful tool, the results of testing is a wonderful tool for planning instruction that you've got to have. That's a component that early in wasn't that utilized that well until I can remember A-CAP come in, and then we've morphed into these other tests and so forth that we're doing. But I want to speak for testing, for the information obtained from testing. I see a prep need for that. Maybe not as much, maybe not as much time in prepping teachers on the administration, although I know there's some legal components to that, and they've got to be aware of. And I just want to put that in to kind of pull a little bit together.
Thank you.
Mr. Crane, go ahead.
I want to rewind back to what Mr. Nessel said, prompted a question, I know that was a little while back. You were talking about it's fairly obvious when there's grade inflation, if that occurs based on everything put together. If that, if we see that's happening here or there, I'm assuming there's mechanisms in place to address that with the teacher wherein that's happening, are there mechanisms in place to go back and remediate with those students, to make sure that they're getting back on actual track, if they weren't and their grades have been inflated?
Okay, so I just want to be clear on what I said, is that we have implemented a new analytics system, which allows a principal to bring in to a dashboard very easily data and information. They can pull in reading inventory and math inventory, they can pull in SC ready or pass or end of course assessment, and they can pull in grades as well. They can pull in absenteeism, discipline, and things. And by looking at those visualizations, they can easily see if, you know, get a picture of if there's some grade inflation going on. If a student is not achieving well on any assessment, and they've got all A's in the class, it becomes kind of evident. And there are other measures, I know the EDs look at grades regularly as well. So I can't speak to, you know, retaliation of the student.
Let me simplify the question. If a principal notices that, and maybe, maybe it's not a testing question, maybe it's somewhere else question, but we have mechanisms to intervene and make sure the child is brought to where they're supposed to be?
Yes, Mr. Crane, part of the feedback loop that Kate was talking about includes the principal, includes the content interventionists, and includes the executive directors, all having those conversations about the students in those classrooms, and about where students in a particular classroom compared to students in another classroom, which is about the district. And then they have those conversations with, with those teachers and provide the support for those teachers. In fact, that's one of the primary functions of our literacy coaches and those support personnel in the schools, to provide that support and training for teachers when they're experiencing those things.
We also talked about the quarterly meetings, teachers meet quarterly, and benchmark debriefings, admin meet quarterly with executive directors. They, all their data comes together, and grades is one big, you know, component of that.
Just two comments, really more anything else, and I appreciate that, thank you. As far as the percentage of the minutes, that's the student minutes, not instructor minutes.
That's instructional minutes, available instructional minutes generally, minus recess, lunch, pickup and dismissal, you know, time.
So the percentage wouldn't necessarily, I like to, on Mr. Smith's point, if I'm a teacher and I'm having to spend hours in the evening or something, preparing for something, that's not going to be factored into that 65, 700?
No, that does not, teacher grading at home, no, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's fine, I just, I also just want to make sure. And then the final comment on the benchmarks, this was probably a bigger topic of conversation last year, but I've only heard from teachers that have said, man, we need to be on grade for that. And the primary concern that I'm hearing, and I'm sure you've heard too, is that essentially, I'll put this in air quotes, the word got out to students that it wasn't going to count. And you certainly got students that are going to do well and work hard anyways, but you certainly have some students that if they know it's not going to count, might not give their best effort. So I think that was sort of the, that was the logic given to me by numerous teachers as to why it should be graded. But I'll just share that, I'm sure you've heard...
Yeah, we have, yes, sir, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Moulton, and then Mr. Nessel.
First of all, thank you again. These questions, I think, are a little overwhelming, but they're, they're helping us understand kind of where we're at. I got a text message during a lot of this conversation, and wanted to chime back in on a comment, and then see if you could answer the question associated with it. The comment was, and I think I see part of the disconnect that I'm having with the 1.4% instructional minutes that are taken versus what the teachers are saying. And the teachers concern me a lot. I know, I probably know pretty well about nine teachers, and I go out and survey teachers from time to time and just ask them questions. Well, what I'm understanding now from the text message is like in kindergarten, for instance, it shows a 30-minute interval for the KRA, but the kindergarten teacher I've heard from says they have to do that per student 22 times. They do not sit down 22 kids and give them a 30-minute test, so they have to do it per student 22 times.
For KRA, that, there are 17 items on there that you can take, you can do them in small groups, so you could do it, you know, seven, eight, nine kids at a time. At kindergarten, it's a little bit more difficult to do it any higher than that. So 20 times they would be doing that, and they have to collect that data. The other is, part of that assessment is observational, just like clipboard routines, motor skills, things like that, that you just observe in the classroom over a period of weeks. But you are correct in that, yes, this is from a student participation, and some things are one-on-one. FMP is sitting down, one-on-one reading, there's no substitute for sitting down and listen to a student read to kind of identify, you know, their issues. So yes, that is one-on-one time, absolutely, you are correct.
I have great value for the numbers. I think it's really good and really telling from a student's perspective, but I don't think we should, we should forget about the teacher's perspective. If they're spending 22 times that amount of time on one examination, you know, that's something we need to take into account in a teacher's time. And then, you know, there's another issue that I hear about, I've heard this at least 10 times, and that is the teaching window, or the testing window time. And the, basically the entire time students are going through testing, that's a testing window that a teacher cannot interrupt or do other things, or, you know, or achieve other things with the other students, the remaining students. And again, I'm just saying this as a comment and for you to consider, and I'm sure you have, I'm not suggesting you haven't, but it's a lot more than just the effect on the student. And it kind of explains the disconnect, when I told you earlier, I'm hearing from the teachers, testing, testing, testing. Well, they feel like they are testing, 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 whereas a student might not get that feeling. So I mean, that's just something to consider.
No, I understand your point. I'm less clear on the testing window, because typically we have a window three times, we have a two-week window, and that is to allow students to rotate in and out of a lab. But that's like one class at a time, so that shouldn't impact other teachers from continuing their testing, except for when their students go to the lab. So I'm not, I'm less clear on that.
Yeah, unfortunately, I'm not as clear. Oh, I wish I were. I do, like I said, I think overall my comment is, I see the effort, I have value for the assessments, I really do. But when I was running for school board, one of the things I asked myself is, obviously, do we need all the testing we're doing? You know, what's the purpose in the testing? I listen to you, and I feel really good about the testing. But when I hear from the teachers, I feel really bad about the testing. And so that's where I have to, you know, trying to weigh the two, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nessel, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this question might be for Mr. Lawrence. So the, at least I saw on the news, the state's going to apply for a waiver to not do standardized testing in South Carolina this coming school year. If they get that waiver, would we be doing the benchmark testing that correlates to that?
I think we still, we still need to know where our students are, because at some point, the state is going to reinstate testing. So say our students go this year, say they go next year, and possibly even another year, that would be three years without us determining at what level, on a fairly consistent basis, our student stands. So I think the benchmarks, in my mind, continue to be important, even when they're not pointing toward a specific test, they're still pointing toward students' measurement against the established standards for South Carolina.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm really grateful that we have benchmarks in the absence of student data, something that we know that we have, that they're aligned to state standards, so we at least have some indicator that they're, whether they're achieving state standards or not.
All right. Good.
Are most of these tests criteria...
Yes, not, not most of them.
All of them?
No, no, not all of them, no.
Who's telling which ones are, which ones...
I will, I can put that on the infographic, or not on the infographic, on the chart for you, I will put that on there.
We are doing some, actually, in all of this.
Yes, we are.
I was just thinking about justifying the test approach, it's interesting, if you think of it like a coach with an athletics, you know, they have to evaluate, they know what skills a particular player needs to do, a particular thing. And they have to watch the player in some way, there, that player's ability to do those things, so they know where to go. Where you want, if you don't know how to block, you've got to teach how to block, whatever. It'd be a cool analogy, but that's exactly what you have to do in a test. You've got to know what skills the child has, and where the gaps are, and what the conditions are. And I think that's the way, as I understand it, the benchmark is attempting to do.
That's correct. Before it's too late, before the whole year is gone.
Yeah, because I mean, you're teaching, and you don't really know what's up through the formative test of the teaching camp. And most of those really aren't diagnostic, and that's your, their skills change a lot to itself there. They would see what you do, and then the teacher could infer from that. They're able to see what you do, and then the teacher could infer from that, you know, you need to go back and teach just because the kids didn't know it, but they didn't break it down quite, to, to, I think, basically, because the skills are now.
And that begins with the end in mind, too, is that you mentioned each teacher, you know, they feel this is my classroom, it's my domain, we understand that and we respect that. Teachers add so much value, but they are also part of creating a graduate, and they'll each make a contribution. And what you said about teachers, I, I, my background was higher ed, and I took higher ed faculty through an outcomes assessment program, and you talk about pushback and herding cats. This is my classroom, this is in my academic freedom, and I'm going to teach this, and this is the way it's going to be. But they were all working towards a bachelor of science in accounting or, or finance, and they each made a contribution for that regard. It was painful, three years, but they finally, they saw the light and they saw the value and they could see, oh my gosh, I'm using the same textbook as the MBA, I'm in the undergraduate program, you know, what's going on here, the skills? So there is value in seeing the whole continuum and, and where each person makes a contribution. And that's what we're trying to do with our, our, our graphic, showing that we are all contributing to, you know, producing a good graduate of Aiken County Public Schools.
Are you familiar with the BSA program that, that is now developed in South Carolina?
The HSA, HSA, not BSA, no.
It used to be BSA, basically, it was a separate program.
Okay. Wait, long before me, yeah.
Yeah, and they're out.
I'm sorry. Sorry.
It's okay.
I remember HSA.
I've had a whole other career.
It's what I took in school, so it's a whole.
The core is that the, ultimately, the end of the BSA program was the test for graduation. You know, you could not graduate from a, a exit exam, you could not graduate from high school, South Carolina, they should pass the exam, reading math, and writing, I believe.
Yeah.
And too many people were failing, so they did away with it. That was the solution. You know, and, and so that's made me a little suspect of state-developed testing programs. The BSA exit exam was at an eighth-grade level, by the way. So, go figure. So that's why I'm a little bit uncomfortable with all these tests that are state-run. And I know they go out higher competition to do it, but they, they gotta be easy to pass with politicians who don't get it.
So, so let's, let's kind of reel back in here so we can move on to the next subject, but I think we had a good conversation, and I don't think we want to stop here. So I wrote down a couple of things that maybe we want to, the next time, have the same kind of format, Kate, if we could. Hi, Mr. Lawrence. And so here's what I wrote down, a description of the assessments, and with that is the associated costs, I think, would be helpful for all of us. Helpful for all of us. And who pays?
I, I think it's really cool how the assessments are, you know, used to modify instruction and just like to walk through an example of that, you know, I don't teach, so it'd be kind of cool to see how test data is used to modify the instructions.
Okay. So that, that's kind of, that's probably enough to keep us occupied for an hour the next time, I'll say. I'm trying to break it down into some segments, because, you know, the intent was, is that, you know, our goal was really to evaluate testing so that we could convince ourselves that we're, we're doing all the testing that we need to do, we're not over-testing, and the tests that we're, are conducting are effective, and that they're, they're valuable for our students and our teachers. So that was kind of our goal. So that's probably the next session. And then also, like, the testing window, and maybe this, the logistics of the testing, maybe for the, a second topic? You know, I think someone asked about that, maybe Mr. Ness or Miss Vol.
I would like to see the test.
See the test.
I mean, to me, everything that's been said tonight and that will be said would make a lot more sense to me, if I had a field for what we're talking about, if we're talking about a benchmark test or SC-ready test or SC-pass test. Now, I don't need a detail, I mean, just put it in front of me, give me a third, three, you really don't have to worry about the sheet or anything, and, and give me some instructions and I may answer one or two questions. So then I've got a field for what it is the kid's experiencing and seeing what the teacher has to do in the process.
Well, maybe we could.
He just needs some limitations, certainly.
You know, it'll be fifteen, twenty minutes, and I think that that would help me put everything else that's being said into context.
Well, I think that fits into the description of tests and stuff like that, so we could probably, and maybe we need to split that into two sessions, so, you know, we don't get overwhelmed and you don't get overwhelmed.
Absolutely.
And then the logistics, and then I think the third thing was just, I really like this time spent on assessments for elementary. I think maybe just expanding that to like the middle, middle and high, and see if we can kind of see that same perspective. So maybe those three things that we can, you know, maybe do that the second meeting in July or the second meeting in August, just depending on what the workload is with that. Mr. Lawrence, does that sound all right?
Yes.
Does that sound all right there?
Was there one meeting in July?
We just selected another date.
Oh, that's right. Second.
Tuesday, yeah. So, so, you know, just, is this a good discussion? I think a good format, everyone having their questions answered and stuff like that. Hopefully, the public, if they want to email some questions, we can kind of work that into the discussion, too.
Where do we email the questions to?
Mary Glenn? Or Mary Glenn, or the superintendent, Mr. Lawrence? Or, or your respective board member? Good question. PK, thank you. You don't usually take questions from the audience, but since you started, go ahead, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
I haven't heard, no one mentioned how the school year is going to be when it starts with this virus. And just like looking at how y'all are sitting, you're sitting separately to give space and even wearing masks. So how are we going to bring the kids back in and teach them when they got to be, they can't be brought back in?
Well, that, that's a good question, and that's on the agenda for later on. We're going to have a briefing from Mr. Lawrence, and then we're going to have some discussion on that, too. So if you could sit tight for probably another hour or so?
But the goal starts in August.
August, we realize that. Thank you. August seventeenth is what we're shooting for. Okay, so.
I just want to thank you all for giving us, extending this time. I really appreciate it. It's important, and thank you for being interested.
Yeah, I was very informative to me, and I think to all of us and hopefully everyone in the audience, too. All right, so the next topic, I think, is.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I've asked Dr. Foster and Mr. Spears to open up this next discussion for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Mr. Lawrence. I appreciate you guys giving me the next seven minutes of your attention span. I think that's the average adult attention span. We had an updated, several things for you guys. I mean, you received a packet that contained updates, month-to-month updates on our suspension data for our school district. It is summary, however, of the August to September, or, excuse me, August to December timeframe, as well as the, the January to June timeframe. We've gone back and kept this data for several years now, going back to the fifteen, sixteen school year, and you can see there, there are trends. What we try to do is look at lost instructional time as far as the hours that a student or students are suspended from school. This year, we had a little over seventy-six thousand hours of lost instructional time due to in-school and out-of-school suspensions for our students in Aiken County, roughly twenty-five thousand or so students. Very consistent with this timeframe last, or for the last school year, but a jump from, from the previous years. As you can see, the January to June summary, a dramatic change during this school year, obviously, and I'm happy to really report to you guys, there were no students suspended for the last two and a half months of school. Amazing.
Can you survey there?
No, no, no parents. I think some public safety members are ready for them to come back to us, though. I'm almost hurt. Guys, last year, we had a hundred and seven thousand hours of lost, lost time for students due to suspensions from school. What we do with this information, you know, and if you look at, at the chart, we also had in this timeframe, and this is, you know, always alarming to me, the, the spring numbers of recommendations for expulsions, you know, we had ninety between the beginning of January and March thirteenth, ninety recommendations for expulsion. Quite a bit. And we try to get our principals to look at this information, to come up with strategies within their building. There's not a cut or solution sometimes to these things, and every group of students has their similarities and has their differences in every school. We do provide this information with the principals and their administrative teams. For our annual time, last year, a hundred and eighty-three thousand hours of lost instructional time compared to a hundred and thirty thousand hours this year, approximately. Had a hundred and seventy-six expulsion hearings up until March thirteenth. And up until the school closures, I really thought that I was going to surpass last year's numbers. And I can, we can talk about the reasons why in, in a few moments. This school year, we had forty-five students who are ratified through the expulsion process, and we had up until March thirteenth, about four hundred and forty students that were referred to the alternative school. And that's through the end of this school year. As far as the hearing results that went through this year, like I mentioned, a hundred and seventy-six hearings for the school year compared to a hundred and ninety-five last year. Through the hearing process, seventy-two students were placed at Pine Crest at the alternative school, nine probations, which basically means they were given a ten-day suspension and, and maybe some community service, and, and allowed to go back to their home school on a strict probation with a behavior contract. Like I mentioned, forty-five students had their expulsions ratified by the school board. I assigned thirty-one students to a virtual school through the expulsion process. Three were home-based, and we had sixteen students that were assigned to the Adult Head programs through Aiken County schools as a result of their hearings. Another chart to show how things have changed, one of the board goals that established several years ago was to look at alternatives to expulsion. Two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, the only alternatives that we had were to send them back to their home school on a probationary basis or to assign them to the alternative school for expulsion. There were seven hundred hearings. And the reason we've been able to reduce these hearings over the last several years is we've given the principals the discretion to make a direct appeal to place a student at Pine Crest at the alternative school if they are not behaving on a consistent basis. Let's give principals discretion to assign them to the alternative school rather than go through an expulsion process. Through March thirteenth of this year, these are the top ten, that far left-hand column there, it's the top ten offenses of this current school year. And the eighteen, nineteen, seventeen, eighteen, sixteen, seventeen school year columns are basically how those numbers compare to this year's top ten. And going back, those were all in the top ten, just in different orders in different years. So these are our top ten offenses basically for the last four years. Tardies, mainly a high school offense. How do you get students who are repeatedly tardy to see the value in getting in class on time? And that's something that we bring up to the administration of the schools. And, you know, you may have one student who is late once because the car didn't start, but you also have the habitual offenders, which does fall into some of the attendance and truancy rules. Refusal to obey and defiance, cutting class, disrupting class, bus violations, the hit, kick, push, inappropriate behavior, it's a general, general offense, phone violations where students might be, you know, displaying a phone or using it in class, ID violations, once again, that's high school offense mainly. And then disrespect to the adults and staff. One thing that is not on the top ten is, is fighting. And, you know, this, this information is provided, we do post this on the website. We had roughly two hundred and sixty-five fights up until the time we closed schools during this year compared to four hundred last year. For those of you that are new to the board, fighting became a really big issue several years ago. A parent reported that there were, it was an excessive amount, I don't want to say like seventy or seventy-five fights at a particular school before Thanksgiving. And looking at the numbers, we, we couldn't figure out where that came from unless her child was going home every day and saying there was an argument in, in the hallway or in a classroom between two students, and he was calling that a fight. We weren't quite sure. But it did cause us to take a hard look at the data, and what we found is, in previous years up until this point, we were coding things wrong compared to the State Department, what they had told us to do. A fight is one incident, and it was being coded as, as two. So like two or three, four participants all had a separate incident. The reality is it should have been coded as a singular event. When we started doing that correctly, the, the numbers, of course, dropped. So you can think that we have two incidents, and there were two, two people fighting, it should have been one incident reported. So that, that's one thing to think about and look at as far as our discipline data We do have reports to the state, quarterly reports for our persistently dangerous schools offenses, aggravated assault, drug distribution, forced sex offense, homicide, kidnapping or abduction, and robbery. We had one in January of forced sex offense, and the remaining incidents that got reported to the state on, on the persistently dangerous schools report all revolved around drug distribution. And these were students who were selling or handing out marijuana or vaping THC-contained materials, as well as prescription attention deficit drugs, Adderall, for example, to, to folks in their classes or on the bus. And this is alarming, because those numbers went up from last year. We do have some good news. I mean, if you think about this, if you look at the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, sixty-seven percent, roughly two-thirds of our students, did not have any discipline referrals this year to the office. Okay? And it's fairly consistent in years past. If you look at this year, about thirty-three percent, roughly a third of our students had one discipline referral. That one discipline referral may have been a tardy, may have been a bad event. You know? If you look at the end of the column, students with ten or more, we had this year six hundred and twenty-one students who had ten or more referrals. If we took tardies out of the equation, it probably would have dropped by a third. We had several students that had multiple tardies throughout the year, which is one of the reasons why the Code Conduct Committee took a hard look at how we process tardies throughout the schools, instead of each individual tardy being sent to the office and a student maybe amassing thirteen or more, a combination of thirteen or more suspension days due to in-school or out-of-school from being tardies. Our goal is to get them in class, keep them in class, and we realize they do have to have a consequence for poor behavior or poor choices. So the committee decided to make a change for the upcoming school year to reduce the number of offenses before a student was sent to the office. They're still getting a consequence, it's just, hopefully, we can build in, before they get to that consequence, the importance of them being in that classroom. So, you know, it really is a good thing that we have several students, you know, throughout the district of twenty-five thousand kids, two-thirds of them aren't in the office. So, you know, it really is a good thing that we have several students, you know, throughout the district of twenty-five thousand kids, two-thirds of them aren't in the office. One of the things that we do, and we started this year to help our students, is the establishment of our youth development teams. We want our schools to be safe. We want our students to feel safe and comfortable in an environment that's nurturing, in an environment where they can grow. We want to strive to meet the needs of each individual student, each of them. So in every school, the the youth development team, which would consist of school administrators, school counselor, teachers from every grade level or subject area, special programs, you might have a psychologist, if you have a full-time psychologist on the staff that participates in this, to provide different areas of support for our students, like social emotional learning. You know, how do we help a student who fits that mold of, you know, the angry young teenager, so to speak, learn to deal with emotions, learn to control things without an outburst? That's very difficult, especially when they hit thirteen, fourteen, or even earlier in some cases. Monitor support, onsite training, or behavioral expectations. As we have schools that have discipline presentations at the beginning of the year and throughout the year to to continue to stress the expectations of our school district through the code of conduct and their individual expectations at their schools. You know, one of the high schools in particular would have a quarterly meeting with all four grades and talk about the behaviors that they've seen and provide the students feedback with specific numbers of different incidents for that class and the school. We also feel that counseling and mental health support is is key for our students. We have some programs that have already started for social emotional learning and mental health in our elementary schools. And the thought behind that is start early and build that foundation so they they actually can continue to develop throughout middle and high school. Our goals for the individual youth development teams, establish effective practices and protocols for schools to identify, teach, and monitor, and hold students accountable for understanding and managing behaviors, establishing and maintaining positive interactions and relationships with students and adults, and making responsible decisions. So the teams will monitor student disciplinary practices, accommodations established in IEPs and five oh fours, ensuring timely and consistent interventions and discipline throughout the school. And the key there is consistency. We want all of our students to understand that the rules and the protocols that we have established in our buildings apply to them. Provide teachers with onsite resources and training, the area of classroom management, I'll explain one of these in a moment. And then provide early detection and interventions for students needing counseling and or mental health support. Guys, we we've, I think you were given a packet tonight that has some information that not only do we expect our schools to establish these teams and meet and discuss students who are having issues and never to help them, we also reached out to the teachers and staff of the school with a survey with several questions to see if these protocols and these programs are are being affected, or what they might need help with, as well as some other things in the program. As far as classroom management, district-wide, last year, we began to implement a program from Time to Teach. It's a district-wide initiative to help our teachers in the area of classroom management. In the summer, we, last summer, we met at South vacant, Teams for Meet School. We're trained by the Center for Teacher Effectiveness over a three-day period. We were given information, we had to act out scenarios, have small group discussions. We were all actively involved in the learning process, and the trainers then took this information back to their home school and further trained those teachers. For the start of the program, we decided as a group to focus our teachers on that, on the areas of teach-tos and refocusing. You know, your teach-tos, what are we going to be doing today? And the the refocusing, the big piece, is remaining calm when you have a minor classroom disruption and addressing it at an appropriate time while continuing to teach. You know, if you have a disruptive student, for example, that's talking, you know, you may walk by and say, you know, tap on Dr. Foster's desk, for example. Just as an effort to silently refocus that person who's not paying attention or being disruptive. So those those are real simple strategies in a way. But done on a consistent basis, they will reinforce the desired behavior in classrooms. And one of the other things that we did discuss in this was unconditional positive regard. Basically, it's a strategy to make sure all students know that they have some sort of work. You're not going to sit and make an insulting comment to a student to to get them back on track, you know? And it may be something that you understand that this student has a youth soccer event over the weekend, and when they come back in on Monday, they're all excited, and you say, hey, how'd you do this weekend? It's nothing related to school, but that little comment shows that you have an interest in that person. Or if you know their their mom is is ill, hey, before we get started, how's your mom doing? And it could be something related to school that's positive, you did a great job on the science fair project. You were, I saw you driving the driver's aid car in the parking lot, thank you for not hitting my car, you know, something, something very simple. But it means a lot to the kids who may not get some attention at home. And most importantly, it shows we care about them. Some of the trainings that we had, you know, are in your packet. Beginning of the year, meet with the assistant principals, meet with folks who are the coordinators for the aid program. I also meet with the attendance staff to talk about certain coding issues. And we have established meetings every quarter. Even this year, mid-March, we we had things scheduled, and and those got rapidly changed to online Zoom and Teams meetings. I've also been invited to hold some information as far as, you know, the time to teach, refocusing students, teach-tos in different faculty meetings, which, you know, aren't listed specifically on here. And I've met with some of the youth development teams just to sit in and see how their meetings go. And we do have the same meetings, very similar meetings scheduled for for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. The dates and times, obviously with the the uncertainty of when and how things will be opened back up, may or may not be on there, the dates are are rough, rough estimates of dates towards the end of the quarters for the assistant principal meetings. One of the other things that we do have value in, getting feedback on the code of conduct. I will start asking for feedback maybe the first or second week of school. Read through your code of conducts, what do we need to change for the following year, and I'll start keeping up with suggestions throughout the year. This year, we met in January, towards the end of the month, February. March, I had meetings on Zoom by levels. The first board meeting in May, and then the second. Currently, the code conducts are at Material Center for Printing. So we'll have roughly those same timeframes for for next year for the committee meetings. And the the code of conduct committee is, it's open. I would I would love to have a lot of input. I would love to have more community members than we have, but it is open to community members. I will ask principals, if you have a teacher or a counselor that would like to participate, please let me know. Assistant principals are are welcome. You know, and I would invite members of the board, please come in and see what we do, what we discuss as far as things go. Once again, you know, it is a committee decision on on all things that that get changed around the code of conduct, added or or subtracted from the code. This year, the committee felt it was necessary, I mentioned earlier, to change the tardies, tardy policy for the middle and high schools. But we also, because of the increase of vaping and THC-containing materials, we don't have an accurate way to distinguish what they are, the committee decided that because there was such a dramatic increase, it's to make that an offense that would be a recommendation for expulsion. One question or comments?
Does the district keep demographic data, meaning race, gender, age, on offenses as well as a comparison of the offenses to the consequences?
I will keep demographic data in my charts for recommendations for alternative school and recommendations for expulsion. Demographics, gender, race, general ed versus especially ed, students who have English as a second language, and even life status are things that I keep online. And I can provide you with that information if you like. I can send that off to you, Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Crane?
Thank you, Mr. Spears, for all the information. I have a couple of questions that I just wrote on a couple of slides as as you were hitting them. On the persistently dangerous school report, because of the number of drug distribution incidents, and I remember a few of those coming up to our level, are we seeing that in, is that across schools, or is there particular school or schools where we're seeing that more, does this break that down on here? That we're seeing that, specific communities that we're seeing that?
The distribution, believe it or not, different levels, different schools. This year, and and mind you, this is distribution, this is where somebody is actively handing it off, selling it, passing it out, whatever the case is. Drug usage, drug possession, possession of alcohol, for example, alcohol-related offenses, they all increased this year, a dramatic increase. Almost doubled what we had during the eighteen, nineteen school year. You know, we're we're essentially a microcosm of society, we're seeing an increase in this around around our communities, right? Now, one of the interventions that we do have in place, and this was our our trial year for this, is a partnership with the Aitken Center. So if a student, I always love using Little Johnny as an example, but if Little Johnny got caught with a little bag of marijuana on campus, if the principal decided that as a as a punitive measure, you needed to go to the alternative school, one of the stipulations that would have have to happen before that student returned to the alternative school is to go through drug and alcohol counseling at the Aitken Center, which is provided free and charged. All they had to pay for maybe was one drug test. But the counseling and the interventions on the campus of, counseling actually took place at the Aitken Center. But we also had some interventions, some life skills come in, programs come in at Pinecrest where they were required to sit through and participate in those. We had this year roughly ninety students who participated in those programs, which was, like I said, it was a dramatic increase from the year prior. And so we are, I'm happy to to realize that we we've already met with the Aitken Center prior to the official close of the school year, air quotes. And we're continuing that program again for the upcoming year.
Glad it's there. I'll just flip on through, I appreciate that information. On the Time to Teach slide, I'm familiar with the concept refocusing. Can you just briefly describe what's a teach-to?
Teach-tos are the desired behaviors and desired objectives, things that we would like to see in the classroom. And and what the program just stresses is taking the time to teach these students the desired behavior. Like if you require your students to to raise a hand to ask a question, this might be the appropriate way to ask, you know, to to indicate you have a question, not, you know, slumped over on the desk with your hand kind of doing this. So these are our expectations in our particular classes, those are the teach-tos.
That's a great description, just to clarify, it's a lesson plan for behavior. Just like we have a lesson plan for math and English, it is a really descriptive lesson plan on how I'm going to teach that child that behavior that I want him or her to display. So really, that is a, it's actually a book that will say, here's the objective, here are the activities, here's how you do it. And then also check it for understanding how to look to ensure that the child understands that specific behavior. Some of them are already created, the teachers can also create their own that are in line with their normal classroom activities and or routine. So it's just a lesson plan for for behavior.
Thank you. I got two more quick ones. On the on the the list of meetings that you're doing around the district with with the schools and grade levels and whatnot, just a high-level question, are those generally fairly decently attended?
Yes, sir. We do invite teachers to attend those, and every now and then I'll have some teachers come to those meetings, and they do participate, I encourage that. Assistant principals are required to attend, and I do have some principals that come. Generally, we'll talk about any concerns that they may have, trends that we're seeing in their in a particular school or in an area as far as the discipline trends go, and and generally if they have questions for me or anything I can do to help them out, you know, that's the time to ask questions. One thing I would like to point out is, you know, Dr. Foster and I, and it's not on there because I don't have the date, have had a conversation about bringing the disciplinary trends for each area to the attention of the advisory councils on on a regular basis throughout the year, starting this year. I know oftentimes they feel like they're left out of the loop on some things, and I felt like this is a good way to have a little more community involvement and allow them to know what's going on in schools and address any concerns that they may have have about discipline or anything else that I can bring back here.
I think that's a great idea, just to help get this information out in the community. And the last last piece on the information out of the community with with the code of conduct meeting meetings for the coming year, which I doubt are scheduled yet. When you have those sort of penciled in, I would mind knowing that if it's all right for us to sort of help advertise that. Because we always, I I get, I don't want to say we, I get a lot of feedback from folks that have opinions and ideas that, you know, maybe they'd like to be in the room and share some of that, and they're welcome to do that.
Absolutely.
That's just for me, I appreciate it.
We'll definitely value that community input or participation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spears. I'm gonna probably do the same thing Mr. Crane did, I've got a couple of things, it's not that much. First thing, the the thing that jumps out at me when I look at numbers and see slides, you know, and if somebody didn't ask this question, I think we'd be a little remiss. What happened from the fifteen, sixteen numbers to every set of numbers after that in regard to expulsions? They were very high in fifteen, sixteen, and then they dropped, and I think I heard you say you came up with a number of alternatives to expulsion. Is that right? I'm gonna turn this over to Dr. Foster.
Okay, and that's a great question, I'm glad you pointed that out because what Johnny alluded to earlier was there were limited interventions, you had no options. So now, in Aitken County, we have virtual school that now exists, which didn't exist at that time. We have Fresh Start that didn't exist, that now exists at that time. Also, the ability for a principal to make an administrative decision and say, you're going straight to SEAL as opposed to having to go through the actual process and maybe say, well, listen, I know he needs to go to SEAL, I don't really want him expelled, there were circumstances where There were circumstances where a principal would say, I don't necessarily think they need to be expelled, but I don't have an option, and then when I turn it over to the powers that be, then they're expelled, and they say, I didn't really want him expelled. They have the administrative authority to, and now the ability to make that decision. So therefore, they were just given more options to help address that student at the school level, and not rely strictly on the district level to make those decisions. So, again, the use of, virtual, the use of adult ed and those kind of things are also options that they have, so that's the reason why the expulsions went down. It's just a matter of finding a way to help a kid maneuver through that time so that they can still have an opportunity to be successful, because at the end of the day, they're gonna be citizens in Aiken County. And we have to make sure we have helped them get an education and/or a degree without disturbing the educational environment in the judicial setting. So, that's why.
Thank you. It's a follow-up to that, I appreciate that, Dr. Foster. Kind of a follow-up to that, I was on two school improvement councils, and during my time on those, one was elementary and one was high school. And the thing I learned, first of all, I wanna make sure I say something, I think the thing that I liked least being on the school board is sitting through expulsion hearings, okay? I do not like that, I do not like to see students expelled, and I like having alternatives to it, so, you know, just make sure you know that. But, when sitting on the school improvement councils for an elementary and a high school, I heard from, my first question when they made me chair was, what do you think the largest problem in the school is? You know, what is the thing we need to work on the most? And both schools, elementary and high school, both said parental involvement, okay? And so, my mind starts thinking, well, what can we do to improve that? Do we have some sort of training? You know, I know you can't get parents there after work, at the end of the day, I've heard that, and I understand that, I'd be the same. But at the same time, I do understand, from my own three children that went through public schools, I do think there's a lot of value in parental involvement in setting behavior standards and expectations, and is there anything being done?
You know, as far as a set parenting class for some of these folks, it's obviously something that we could explore, you know, come out and make it required, but, you know, it's, you're absolutely correct. The level of involvement varies. We can have students who have both parents in the home, with very little interaction with their kids. Yet, I can have a single mom with multiple kids in the home who works two jobs, and the kids are at AAU basketball, they are at church, church choir, Wednesday night service, you know, whatever the case is, and it's because that particular parent has told me in a meeting, I need help, and I've reached out to my church, I need help, and I've reached out to my community. So we do have some very good parents who have some kids that make a very bad choice, and sometimes it's not necessarily a lack of parenting skills that, you know, create an issue for that student. Sometimes it's just their own poor behavior, poor choice, whatever the case is. And I really feel strongly that, you know, we do need parents. I tell students in expulsion hearings, they're two guys I look back on, you know, in my life, aside from a parent, that were there to put a foot, come on behind when I needed it. And I credit them some to this day for me being where I am. They guided me along the way, one foot at a time, so to speak.
I'd like to add something to that as well, if I can. The truth of the matter is, parenting in today's society is a lot different than it was when we were growing up. And although we have parents who want to do well, and have the resources to do well, it's a new environment for them too. Even myself, as a parent, have to sometimes step back and think about how I parent in today's society with the access and the changes that kids have. So, you're exactly right, and whoever figures that out will be a millionaire, because that's just not something true to Aiken, it's true across this country because society has changed. But also, we have to look outside the box and look at parenting from a non-traditional perspective. A parent doesn't necessarily have to be the individual who birthed you or raised you, it can be a parental figure in the community that can not only help the student, but also help the parent become a better parent and understand the social dynamic in which we live in now. So we have made an effort to have, we had mentor fairs a few years back in every single area, and it's just like a job fair, but all we were doing was soliciting mentors in the community. Some places were successful, had a pretty decent turnout, while others were not so successful. Parenting as we know it is going to look different, it has already changed, if we're not willing to change with that dynamic, we're gonna be always fighting that uphill battle. So, you're exactly right, the parenting piece, but we have to look at parenting as sometimes a surrogate parent, and not be biologically in-obercaring. So, I hope that helped clear that up. Thank you.
It did, I just got one more, I know we got a lot of people, a lot of time, but first of all, I totally agree, I think a lot of people that know me know I spent twenty-five years as a youth pastor, and I was that surrogate parent in many times, and I enjoyed it, to be honest. But what I found, whether with my own kids or someone else's children, the higher you set the expectations, the better the performance, and you know, that's right. And I think sometimes parents, or surrogate parents, or, you know, parents in the non-traditional setting need help, and there's parents in a traditional setting that need help, okay, lots of them. But here's my last question, and this is my last thing I wrote down, and this may be more for the general discussion on discipline, but you might can help, you've probably seen this. I know in the last two years, there was one that happened, two years ago, and one that happened this past year. There was a student, both of these were elementary students, I won't mention the schools, I've got a lot of details on it, and I'm sure you do too. But one was the first, what's disturbing, one was the first-grade student that bit a teacher very severely, to the point that if they were related to me, they probably would have been at the hospital, okay? And there probably would have been charges filed, and a lot of other things happening. So it was pretty severe, it wasn't just a minor bite that children do. Then last year, there was a child, a second-grade student, that pulled down the pants of another second-grade student, pants and panties on the playground, of a second-grade girl. My problem is this, and this is what I need to understand, I'm not saying I have the answer, I wish I did. From what I could dig and find out, find out on my own, there were no consequences to either student because they were both under an IEP, and one of the IEPs had a no-touch order associated with that student. I've never heard of a no-touch order, but that's what I heard was part of the IEP. And so, when this student has this sort of outburst, believe me, I love this, I love this student, I love to help this student, so I'm not saying this in a mean way, but when they have an outburst, instead of removing the other twenty-one students from the classroom and letting this person just have their outburst, it just seems like that we're a lot of smart people, it seemed like we'd come up with a better answer with the Code of Con- and my question to you, and this is where you come in.
Yes, sir.
Does the Code of Conduct apply to students with an IEP?
Yes, yes. Yes, it does. Well, there are several things that we have to follow with a student who has an IEP or 504. And when those plans are created for a student with a disability, it becomes the law. So we have to follow what is in that IEP specifically to the letter of the law. Now, if a student does have an outburst, does show some kind of extreme or unusual behavior, we would have, well, the school will have a meeting scheduled to discuss that event, to discuss that behavior, to discuss the incident at length, to see if there is anything else that we can do as far as the district to serve them, as far as the special programs department to serve the student, in an effort to make them successful. I can tell you that in extreme cases, there may be incidents where a student's removed from the classroom, or dependent on the age and the ability, home-based for a certain period, or provided with counseling services or things like that, but certainly, Mr. Walton, you know, we do take that very seriously.
Can I add more things? Because there was two-part question there, you talked about the kid being, the other twenty-one students having to be removed and disrupting their instruction. I see some folks in here that were trained in time to teach, and there's a component of time to teach, and I've seen it in action in some of our schools as I'm going around, where there's a strategy that the school, once they've gotten to that training point, it's a kind of a stair step. But when they flood the classroom, it's actually a strategy to address that specifically, where these students are not necessarily having to be removed, but it's also an opportunity that allows that child to make a conscious choice and still engage the students in learning in that environment, and they're taught how to do that. So that teacher, or those certified trainers that are in every single school, will take that back, and as their school's skill sets of teachers are ready to move to the next level, they train them through that. Aiken intermediate is a great example, because I was having, I happened to be there one day, and I saw it in action, they did a wonderful job of that particular strategy, and it had been effective, and we went back and I spoke to Ms. Hewitt about that, and she said that the teachers have loved it, and I've gotten feedback from teachers, say, listen, this is working. So there are strategies to address that, so that answers the second part of your question. You're exactly right, they deserve the opportunity, but during that time to teach, that's why we selected that model, because we could give that additional support in the classroom before we have to just immediately remove it, move the rest of the class.
And Mr. Walton, just one more clarification on that. An individual education plan or an IEP does not preclude a student from a consequence. Now, the IEP is developed because of a disability. If it's determined that the behavior is a manifestation of that disability, then that does create some situations where we have to not punish a kid for being disabled. If the disability is what caused the behavior, you really can't punish the kid for that. Doesn't mean we're okay with the behavior, it just means we have to find other means of redirecting that behavior, and it is very difficult and complicated sometimes, as you know.
Yeah, I thank you all, and I didn't mean to take that much time. I do want to tell you, I'm not as mean as I sound, okay? I firmly believe in, you know, nine positive reinforcements to one negative reinforcement, trust me. But at the same time, I just want to make sure that we're applying the Code of Conduct, or if we're not, if it's not consistently applied, then we're sort of all wasting our time, but, you know, that's my point. Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shealy, Mr. Zylas, and Dr. Bradley. Go ahead, Ms. Shealy.
I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation too, and wanna echo what Mr. Walton said, that, you know, of course, it's always a concern, you know, that we apply the discipline consistently, and, you know, from working in the mental health field for twenty-eight years, like I have, I fully agree with what I've been hearing, that, you know, it's very important to support the children, to support the families, to support the community, and also, another piece though, is it's important to be consistent, you know, with discipline and everything, so I appreciate all that. And just from looking at the slides and hearing everything, I'm just curious about one piece. I don't know if you have the statistics on it, but I'm just curious, do you have any statistics of athletes that may be getting recommendations for expulsions and things like that? Are there any statistics like that, or do you break it down?
I have not, I have not broken that down through the hearing process or the seal, you know, process itself, and I, that's something that we could probably ask the high schools. If I do have a student, let's say, for example, you know, a normal year that came to me in April, that was recommended for expulsion, that was a baseball player, spring sports, we will have a discussion about the high school league rules and how they apply to that student being able to participate in fall sports, which they can't. The South Carolina High School League has specific numbers of days that a student can't try out for a sport if they've been recommended for expulsion. Or if my decision is to expel a child, then they would be completely academically ineligible to play anything the following year because they didn't earn any credits. So we do have those discussions, but I don't keep any specific statistics. I can ask the high school principals, if you'd like.
Okay, and that would be good to know, I would like to know that.
Mr. Zylas?
Dr. Bradley? I think you have more comments and the questions, in fact, I only have one question, I think, but I'd guess, Mr. Spears, this is good news, but not surprising that most of, you know, most of our students do what they're asked to do, right? So that's the good news. But I do think, you know, we've got to effectively deal with that, less than ten percent, probably more like five percent, that you showed on the one slide, that, you know, are the platinum level frequent flyers, right? You know, they're always in trouble, no matter what we do. And, you know, that brings about my question, and then I have more comments. So, I'm told, but I've not seen the old policies that say it, that there used to be a term in some old policies about incorrigible behavior, and that, you know, would automatically lead to expulsion after, I don't know how it was worded, maybe you do X number of instances, but, you know, we've seen some A reports for students that come to us for expulsion, I'm like, my gosh, forty-something referrals and serious referrals, how did this even student continue to be in school? So, that's really my only question was about that, and I've got a couple of the comments.
And really, it comes down to that discernment of the administrator that's involved with that student. You know, I can tell you personally, I had a student that, I would like to give him credit for the patch of gray hair that I have right here, when he was in middle school, and you wonder about how he's gonna turn out, and, you know, I'm not ashamed to admit it, you know, giving him a hug and a high five in a parking lot of the store he works in a week after graduation, because he made it, and he made it through high school with a bump here and there, but he made it out, he graduated. And that's just not a stopping point for him. He's gonna continue his education, and he's already enrolled in a school. It made me feel good because he was one I worried about for three years, and even in the high school. So we do have some of those kids, as you put them, the platinum level high flyers, that'll give us a run throughout school, and eventually will turn out okay in life, but we still have to focus on showing them the correct path, like, you know, Mr. Walton said, give them nine chances, and then, and then, we do have principals that do that because of that discretion. I had one hearing right before the school closure, that one of the high school principals had received this student from the alternative school, and she had fifteen referrals before he recommended her, and it was a lot of, some of it was minor, some of it was fairly major, but we pointed out that he's been trying to work with you, that staff has been trying to work with you, and that's the key to some of it.
I don't think we should give up on students too.
No, no, I know.
That's not what I'm saying, but certainly, at some point in time, we have to be concerned for the well-being of that school and the classrooms that this one student just continues to disrupt.
Yes, sir.
You know, from that, let me lead into, you know, I think we should really focus on the, if I just flip through quickly the sheets you gave us on the discipline teacher feedback, the top three, you know, things, even from elementary to middle to high, it seems like it's tardy, certainly for high school, but in disrespect, defiant behavior, and disruptive class, those are the top three or four, would you agree, across the board, maybe that that's a-
In that, in that particular survey, yes, sir, and I think, you know, to tie in to what Mr. Walton's question was about parenting and things like that, some of the disrespect we see is simply because our students haven't been taught what respectful behavior looks like, even, you know, on a personal level at home, you know, that's something we want to model as professionals in the classroom, and sometimes the reaction the student gets from an adult may cause them to act out a little more. Some of the best advice I was given, and it was probably given too late to me in my teaching career, was, walk away. You're the adult, you know, and that's something we need to reiterate sometimes, you know, believe me, I've been that adult that said, oh no, you're not gonna talk to me like that, and it just escalates the problem.
Well, we all know, like Mr. Walton said, it starts at home, right? But I'm just so afraid that I see, we're turning out students that are, that don't respect each other, that don't respect the teacher, they get out of school, I've said it before, they don't respect, you know- They get out of school, I've said it before, they don't respect, you know, their boss, they don't respect authority in any way. The, you know, the law enforcement and and we're turning out students that just that just that just carries through. And we're doing everybody a disservice here, I think, at times. So I think we need to focus on those top, as we implement the policy and talk to principals and how to, what we want to focus on, focus on the things that teachers are saying are their biggest problems. And in one of them being tardies, I have to admit, I'm disappointed in myself as I didn't drive some discussion. I've I've talked to you about it on 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 the change in the high school policy on tardies. You know, where it's one of the top things across the board. But yet we reduce the consequences, you know, for for write-ups, right? I mean, you know, instead of happening every time, it happens every third or sixth and ninth and twelfth time now. And I get it, there were some reasons for that.
Right.
I work on teachers and I'll let you comment in a second. But what I hope we don't see, I may have to call you out on it, Mr. Spears, is is in six months, if you come back and want to brag on the reduction in the number of tardies. So I might say, well, you changed it. You know, so now we're not writing them up. So.
Feel free to call me.
Yeah, yeah.
I want to follow and hopefully provide some clarity on that. The survey was a great survey and it's used as a as an informational and and learning tool. Helping schools to shape their own school cultures, Mrs. Silas. The question is, what are the top three? And I had some teachers actually call me and say, well, this question is kind of confusing. If I had to pick three, these are the three. It doesn't mean that it's happening rapidly. It's just happening more than the others. So it may be five times as opposed to the others happening zero. So they say, well, it'll seem like it's happening a lot, but if you're asking me to pick three. So if there's a top offense, if one is a top offense, we need to address that one offense. We don't need to say, well, we're fine with five disrespectful in actions. So I want to, that question is is kind of ambiguous. And and at some point, if you have to realize, we didn't quantify more than thirty is as being the most. Some schools actually said, well, if I have to pick one, I probably got disrespect. But now it's not often. I get it once or twice, but it's more than I get anything else. So I I think quantifying that and how that's interpreted was 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 key. So I don't want, yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Almost done. I think we do need to have a separate discussion on on the 504s and special needs and IEPs. There's a lot of good, a lot of education that we need so we can educate the public and all of, you know, pitfalls of that scenario and that and that group of students. But, you know, finally, I guess, and I'll speak for myself, you know, this court member anyway, just simply wants a, you know, I want to see an effective, consistent, equitable, but firm implementation of this code of conduct.
Yes, sir.
And I think we have to emphasize that, if I'm speaking for everybody else, but speaking for me, if that's our, if that's this ward's desire, I think that has to be impressed upon our building leaders, that that's what we expect. That's the culture we want to, you know, drive, a culture of respect and all these things. And we expect to, you know, to implement this again fairly, equitably, regardless of demographic. You know, it's it's there for a reason for everybody. So that's my note. So and I do appreciate this opportunity for this kind of discussion. I think this this, doing this frequently, you know, is a benefit.
Dr. Bradley and Ms. Jackson and Ms. Shealy.
Having having watched school for seventy-seven years, what I've observed is that school people are basically nurturing people. They care about other people and they want to help other people. They want to help students learn. They want to help them with any kind of issue that they present when they walk into the school building. And I think that the trap that we've fallen in is that we've taken on too much of that. And it's not going to be a popular philosophy, but I think that the roots of some of the problems that I heard about when I was running for the school board rests in this to an extent. I talked with some teachers who were, that I knew well, having had a history in the district of Nubia. A lot of people could talk to me, particularly before I was on the board because I'd been threatening. And I heard things like, we are expected to teach these bad kids how to behave. I have been told by my principal, you do not send the child to the office because it's your job to teach them how to behave. And my response to that is nonsense. The teacher's there to teach academics. The teacher is expected to have basic classroom management skills. But that doesn't mean that they are there to deal with kids who probably ought to be dealt with in the mental health system as opposed to a a public classroom. There has to be a point at which we are saying, if we say we've done all we can do, now somebody else has got to take over. Because we are a school system, not a treatment facility. And there's a big difference. I've known teachers who left the classroom. I could name names. I'm not going to, but I know it for fact because I've I've followed up enough to find out that this has happened. This is not somebody blowing off, talking irrationally about something that didn't happen because it did happen. The other complaint that I've heard from parents is that my child is afraid to go to the bathroom. They won't go to the bathroom all day because when they go to the bathroom, they're extorted or they're picked on, they're beat up. I don't have firsthand knowledge of that, other than I trust the people who brought that to me. These are people that I've known my whole life just about. It's going on. Maybe not much, maybe. I I don't know to what extent it's happening. But what we've got to do is we've got to look at this from a parent level and from a teacher level. We talked about how much we are saving on the expulsion rate by letting principals make decisions independent of what's written on it. I don't know. Oh, the discipline codes used to specify offenses and now it's a lot more issue-washing. That to me leads to inconsistent application. You know, I like to see a little wiggle room, but I think there has to be a limit on that, too. I mean, if a kid visit. My rule was if a child touched a teacher in anger, that child was to be expelled. I I don't care if it was a push or what. You have to establish a criterion and everybody has to know that this is the line. You don't cross the line. If the teacher has no respect, if kids observe the teacher being mistreated either verbally or or physically, how do we expect that teacher to manage the class? We can talk about skills and yes, there's a variety of skills that teachers have in varying degrees. Some are naturals and some aren't. But but in applying those skills to classroom management, we still have to have some standards that are invalid. And and I worry about that. I think there's been a softening. You know, in an effort to reduce the expulsion rate, I think there's been a softening in the application of of the discipline code. We've we've got more lenient. The teachers are afraid, and I've been told this, that I'm afraid that if I complain or if I send too many children to the office, I'm going to get in trouble. And I think that comes from the top down, maybe not intentionally, but I think we're all the talked about, educating the kid on behavior and behavioral lesson plans and all that kind of stuff. You know, that sends a message to 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 the people down the line. And we can't leave aside of the most important thing that we have in the school system is the contact. The point of contact is the teacher and the kid. And everything we do has got to be driven by them. We've got to do whatever we can do to maximize the teacher's ability to deal with the child in the classroom. And 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 the more we make decisions up here and filter them down, the less that's going to happen. We've got to involve teachers in what we do. We've got to have their input. We've got to listen to them. We need to sit down with them and just listen to what they got to say. I mean, I heard a wonderful, just offhand, got a wonderful idea about what a teacher thinks we need to do about the COVID. He said, I've got to teach. We're not teaching the things that we did. We're doing lesson packets. We were doing these kinds of things. We're having contact, asking the kid, are you doing anything? What can I do to help? That sort of thing, which is good. But he's, I've got to teach. And he says, we got all these teachers. He said, I could teach one day, another teacher could teach the subject, the next day you can round up twenty teachers and in one day you could film twenty lessons. And we could put it on a DVD and hand it to the kid and we wouldn't have to worry about Wi-Fi. We're buying computers. All we got to do is buy some discs, put these kids, these teachers teaching. Now, the interaction on Wi-Fi could be follow-up on these things. You know, we go and we discuss, what did you think about the teacher saying such and such and such? You know, that that puts a little pressure on the child to actually participate in the classroom. Well, you know, we can get it on this later. But my point is, I mean, we've we've got a wealth of people out here who know what they're doing. And I hope we're listening to them. But the same thing needs to happen with discipline. We we really, I I don't think we're as well as we think we are or as we good as we think we are. And I don't think the numbers tell the story. I've I've just heard too much. Everybody, I mean, I can't tell you how many people said, I should hope you're going to get this discipline this right now. And then I come down here and we can't find out. I mean, I can't, you know, I've talked to the officials. They don't know what I'm talking about. So I think there's a breakdown in communication. That that's the reason I said I'd like to. This is this is where a town hall meeting might come in, where we could just let some parents come in. I doubt the teachers would come in and stand up, most of them to, you know, to intimidate and do that. I understand that. But, you know, just hear what the other side of the coin is. I'm done.
Dr. Bradley, I would like to address it. You know, it's, it is, it is something that's very important. Obviously, we we don't want students to be a major disruption in our classroom. And you will not hear the words come out of my mouth to tell a teacher not to send a student that needs to go to the office to the office or call an administrator if they feel they need to call an administrator. And I've gone so far during our first year teacher forums the last couple of years, whether they are new to the field or new to A, if they need something, if they need advice, if they need to handle a situation, if they don't feel comfortable talking to their principal because they're new to the building, here's my personal cell phone number. Feel free to call me. Feel feel free to email me. I'll act as mediator. So that that offer's been made to several hundred people over the last few years. I know I've heard that teachers have reached out to to Dr. Foster about similar situations or advice because they they told me they've reached out to him. So we do have, we do have concerns about what you're bringing up and we do work to address them, you know, when they when they get to us. I've been sent out to schools to to check on folks.
I'm not trying to imply that anybody is willfully doing something that shouldn't be doing. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying that we've got a system whereby we we we're willing to take on more and more responsibility for raising a child. And now we're getting down to where parenting, you know, we talked a few minutes ago, it goes back to the parent. Well, if they don't have a parent or if the parent's no good, then then they're they're in trouble. And so what do we do? We try to step in and take the place in loco parentis, you know, try to try to teach the kid how to behave. And I'm I'm for that up to a point. You know, but when when we start having students get seriously injured or people getting bit to the point where they have to go to the hospital, that kind of, we got to be, we got to use a little common sense. And yeah, it might make us look bad. It might make our statistics bad. We might get criticized by certain elements of 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 our community. But the point is that that we've got to be here for everybody. We've got to be here for the good little kid who comes and all he wants to do is sit there and learn. And he doesn't want to have to put up with kids picking him in the bathroom or or not being able to be taught in the classroom because you got one or two kids over here raising hell all the time. You know, we we've got to find a balance. And and I'm afraid that we've crossed the line a bit a little too far. I mean, I I still stand by, usually, any kid that touches a teacher in anger should be expelled for the rest of the year. And with some things that should occur before you can come back, let's go, is that going to help the child, Spence? No, it's not going to help that child. But but the balance has to be, we're here for all the children, not just the ones who have exceptional needs. We've got to protect the ones who are willing to come and do right.
I think we have, Ms. Shealy, Mr. Smith and Ms. Jackson. Go ahead, Ms. Shealy.
I just want to say, you know, I I agree with what Mr. Silas and Dr. Bradley have said. I'm, you know, and it it goes right along with your presentation because what I've heard from the community and from teachers as well is that, you know, some of the top problems that they see is disruption and disrespect. And I agree, you know, we we do have to support those kids. We have to teach those kids. But I do think that there's a line there where we have to say, okay, you know, there's consequences, you know. And and so I'm glad to see, you know, this presentation and how, you know, reveal a little bit and how we can continue to grow into that and and do even more to address the issues. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
I always am speaking for me only. As an administrator, I used to tell my teachers, discipline, directed love. Because you love them enough to do, to want to teach them. Sometimes you've got to get their attention, just like here. I also look at discipline as teaching, number one. Number two, I look at it as discipline as a safety component. And I've pushed on that a lot because of the fighting, concrete, glass everywhere in our schools. Based on that, we are all right now concerned about COVID-19. We're all worried. I got parents that are coming to me saying some of the same things Dr. Bradley said, that are concerned, as concerned about COVID as they are sending their child to school and that child needing to get to the restroom and can't get there because of the hangout of folks there and the development that goes on there. Now, I know everyone in here knows you can't do a wave. But I do think we need to put an emphasis on the safety for all our children. And if we lose that component, we're failing our kids and our parents.
And, you know, Mr. Smith, I I do understand personally, I have one child left in Aiken schools out of four. And going back several years, my nieces and nephews that have gone through Aiken County it it at home because my nephews wouldn't go to the restroom at the high school because they were unclean or they didn't feel safe. And that is something that was addressed by their parents, you know, to the school administration. But still, you know, my my nephew now is, you know, a family man with his own kids, jokes around sometimes that I didn't go to bathroom for four years. And then, you know, so he didn't feel safe. And I understand that. And that's something that we need to address with with the individual principals, you know, of the schools and try to get them to put a plan in place. I know that we've had schools that have had administrators that sat outside the bathroom for periods, you know, when they've had an incident or two, just to to kind of make the students aware that they understand things are going on that shouldn't and to try to curb those problems. So we can continue to do that as well. You know, that is one thing that I tried to stress too, as a building level administrator, is student safety. So that hit, that hit home.
Ms. Jackson, go ahead.
Thank you. This subject is one that I'm very passionate about. Especially the parental violence along with, oh, there you go, I'm sorry. Along with IEPs and 504s, and I have comments, more so than questions. I agree with Mr. Silas that yes, we would love a piece on 504s and IEPs. Because I really think that parents, even special resource parents, really aren't aware of, you know, exactly. um, really aren't aware of, you know, exactly, you know, where the line is drawn or what the laws are pertaining to 504s and IEPs themselves, and they have to parents. Um, but I also feel that, um, my view is it takes a village. I, I live by that. Um, and I'm a villager. And I feel that Aiken County Public Schools is a villager. And I think that we need to, um, come back to the table some kind of way, um, to see what kind of resources we could come up with to help the parents. And we're not gonna get everybody, I already know that. Um, but at least let them know that we're here, um, that our door is open, and that we're, we're, we're willing to help you to the best of our ability. Um, and I think that goes back to the piece about, um, the children being disrespectful and, you know, kind of out of line. Because if we get, get to the parents and oppress upon them and to help them, you know, really, um, understand just how vital it is for their child to come to school and sit in a seat, and for a teacher back there to take twenty, thirty minutes of instructional time to teach them, um, I think they'll get that. But it's gonna be the way we approach it that matters and makes the difference. And then I would also like to say lastly, um, I think we need to be forward-thinking. Um, and by that I mean, we have, um, a lot of parents and children who are probably gonna pick the virtual option of staying at home, um, and learning online. And when things clear up, praise God, because I believe that they will, and they return to school, we're gonna have a whole set of different problems because they're used to being at home, unmonitored, um, unstructured. Um, so we're gonna have some, some disrespect problems coming from that because they're not gonna be, you know, used to us telling them what to do. They're not gonna want that. When they've been sitting at home for a year, mama just say, you know, "La, go and do your work." So I think we need to be forward-thinking in that, in, in that aspect as well. So that's what I would like to see.
Good, good, thank you. All right, good discussion again. So let's wrap up things and, uh, kind of talk about where we want to go from here. Thank you, Mr. Spears. So, um, you know, we talked about from our brainstorming, we're still kind of defining things and educating ourselves. So, um, I wrote down a couple of things, and I think the next topic we probably need to cover, like IEPs, 504s, IDEA, and just kind of a primer on those and how they're integrated into the discipline policy and stuff like that. I think we could all benefit from that. And then, um, maybe the next thing we had said, we had written down, uh, what's working now with respect to discipline. So maybe more on that time to teach and, and the, the positive things that we have going on. Maybe that's a second session? And maybe we can try to dovetail into that, like parental resources and involvement, that's kind of all together. So maybe those two things next, as we kind of continue that. And, you know, we had talked about having community input meetings. So maybe once we open up and we get our feedback on the ground, we can kind of move into that and have that discussion with the public too, so. But in the meantime, I think if we get these two things taken care of, then we'll keep moving on. Good? All right, thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thanks for the discussion again, everyone too. All right, moving on to Section D, Individual Board Members. The first one is, uh, Area Advisory Council Appointments. I think Mr. Smith, you all had some?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lawrence, on behalf of Mr. Silas and myself, we would like to reappoint the following people to the Area Three Council. Mrs. Rita Turner, Mr. Rodney Way, and Mr. Keith Harrington.
All right, we need a second on that.
Same.
All right, so it's moved to a second, and then we reappoint to the Area Three Advisory Council, Ms. Rita Turner, Rodney Way, and Mr. Keith Harrington?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Uh, that's nine, none opposed, okay, so that passes. Correspondents addressed the board members, I think Mr. Crane, you had something?
Yes, I, I received a letter from a, a teacher in the district, essentially outlining some, uh, complaints. Uh, this teacher has reached out, I think, to every board member at various points. She sort of reached out to me, I think, actually before I was elected. And I know several of us have, have directed this teacher to follow the grievance process, uh, which she has not. And, uh, also to contact the superintendent, which she also does not. And I would encourage her to do that. I don't know who she is, I don't think any of us do. She didn't give me a return address. There is one on here, but it is to a business. So I don't, I don't know who she is, I don't think any of us do, and that's fine. But I'll pass it on to Mr. Lawrence. And hopefully, uh, this person will contact Mr. Lawrence and go through the grievance process.
Yeah, and I, and I had a similar type of correspondence that I, I passed on to Mr. Lawrence earlier. Same, same locations. Anyone else under that correspondence, or any individual board member?
The correspondence that you passed on, is that the same one that I received?
It was a-
With certain pairs, with, with certain pair with COVID-19?
No, it was, uh, related to Mr. Crane, actually.
Uh, I'll pass this one.
Okay, so I think we're on to superintendent's update, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do have just a couple of items, uh, I want to share with you. Last week, or two weeks ago, we, we shared with you our plan for return to athletic training. Uh, tonight, we, uh, have a couple of, uh, returns to activity that Dr. Foster is going to share with you real briefly.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, um, for the sake of time, I'm not going to go through the whole presentation. It is very similar to what you guys were able to review, uh, in regards to return to athletic conditioning, Phase One. But the question was asked last board meeting, um, where we're gonna have discussions about fine arts and band. And, um, I, I never come alone if I, if I can help it, so I brought back some backup. And I see two gentlemen sitting back there, Mr. Chubb and Mr. Lance Stockton, um, two band directors. Had a great opportunity to meet with those gentlemen and come up with some protocols that are actually identical, really, to the, um, protocols for returning, um, to conditioning Phase One. So just wanted, and first of all, thank those gentlemen for being here, their commitment to getting, uh, find our students back active and, um, enhancing their program. Um, we had some great discussions about things and, and making sure that people were held accountable across the board, that every single child at, at every single school deserves an opportunity to, um, participate. And, um, that expectation is something that we are going to encourage all band directors at every site to, to take part in. So, basic premises, everything is pretty much the same. I mean, literally the same as far as the number of students in groups, um, the screening protocols, the liability waivers. We made some work changes in your package just to specify that it's band. And where we had athletic director, we put, um, band director in those spaces. So, um, the board had this, um, report earlier. Um, I can go through this pre-sentence, the board should choose us for me to do so. Um, but it's really identical to what we went through in the sake, for the sake of time. If the board wants to, um, you know, take consideration and, and extend these gentlemen to start those workouts on the 29th. That's the target date for the beginning of band, um, I guess, conditioning. And they're, they know they'll work with the ADs on facilities, all those things apply scheduling. So all those things are in place, and I think we have a great process. Today was the first day for athletics. I didn't get any phone calls, so that made it, we all took a good start, so one day at a time. And, um, theirs is gonna go for fifteen days through the 12th and make sure we get something from the SCSBA about the Phase Two. At that point, Phase Two provisions would be made, and we'll need to make the same for, for athletics. So I would more than happy to answer the questions and, or turn them over to these gentlemen here.
Any questions? Good, Mr. Crane?
The band member, me too.
Thank you, uh, and I'm glad to see the Silver Spirit representative with Mr. Stockton here. Uh, I just really kind of, probably just a real simple question, um, because I haven't dug into this detail. Indoor activities?
Oh, same, yes, sir.
Everything, everything though, okay.
Now, there, there's been a little different, there, there's some instruments that they can't put in the car. They have to go in and get it, so, um, those are the things that are just that, that they'll make.
And are we, uh, do we have the manpower for, uh, it's the same, that's one adult per nine students. Do we have the manpower for that across all of our marching band programs?
Well, Mr. Dean is gonna split himself up into about nine, nine people, because he has a hundred and eighty.
Right.
Nevertheless, that's gonna have to be handled through scheduling.
Right.
And so it may be an extended day for Mr. Dean, and it may take months.
Yeah, so, if you want me like what, what the, the plan is for us, is that I have, I have an assistant. So we, we are yet to decide if we're gonna have eight students at a time with Ms. Nukem and I together that would come to the tent, or whether I'm gonna have nine and myself, like on our practice field, and she will have nine in the stadium or another location in campus. And we, what we're probably gonna do is we're gonna run, um, six fifty-minute sessions a day. We've created a Google Doc where on a voluntary basis, uh, members can sign up. So we wouldn't have a student with us for six sessions, they would be one session a day. Um, just so we can try to see everybody. We're, we're very concerned on, actually, more not on the plane, but on the, the mental stability of all of our students with the stress of not having activities. Any of you that have been a band parent, and some of you have, you know, we're, we're very, very close knit in with what we do. So, um, and Lance is gonna be doing the same thing, um, and Silver Bluff, and we're doing a training session. Lance is gonna hold one on Thursday for the high school band director. So we're, um, we're fortunate that in Aiken County, we all work pretty well together. And so I, I feel like we're not gonna cause any sort of issues, you know? And so we're just gonna try to accommodate as many students as we can safely and through Phase One, in hopes that Phase Two can create a little bit more, and then of course, Phase Three. Just to add for board members, um, the, the guidelines that, that we presented, um, were combined by the South Carolina Band Records Association, also from the College Band Records Association, of which Dr. Mark Speed, who's the director of Clemson, was in charge of that study. So, um, we've taken a lot of studies from organizations and, and across the country and have combined kind of everything. We're following Texas and Indiana. They are huge band states in our, in our country. And so we're, we're following their lead on trying to break everything out as safely as we can and provide our bands with opportunities. So thank you, we appreciate it.
One last thing I'd like to add, because I promised these gentlemen that I would, I would say this. The same provision applies as far as students who don't feel comfortable, or parents who don't feel comfortable. Those students, uh, will be allowed not to participate, um, with, with no penalty. However, um, there's a caveat, there are some circumstances and instruments that require, if you're in a routine, safety. So if it needed to be that, they have to make an executive decision to switch a location before, for student safety, they have that, that right to do that. And I think the school district will support them in that, in that, that direction. So I fulfill my obligation, that was a concern for those gentlemen.
Well, I, I appreciate it, I'm, I'm very excited. I know it's, it's gonna be a unique season. And as the former band member, um, I'll be out there rooting for the Silver Spirit, everybody, uh, to, to new, new, unique year. So I'm excited for this. Thank y'all for being here.
Thank you.
All right. All right, good, Mr. Lawrence, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Foster. Okay, uh, the next topic that I just want to share with you and give you an update on, are our plans for getting back to school. The first time that I sat here in this chair and, and spoke to you back in October, I referred everyone to the photos on the wall over there beside the screen. And I told you then that, that that wall was our focus. That the, the students in those pictures, and the students throughout our school district are, are, are focused, and they still are our focus. Uh, COVID-19 or no COVID-19, our students are our focus. Uh, now with COVID-19, we of course have to keep health and safety, uh, at the forefront of our planning. But every decision that is made is, is designed to support our students. Uh, we have an incredible task force. If, um, if you look there on, on the slide, thirty-nine, uh, folks were on that task force. That number was the number that we thought, uh, we could safely meet with in the space that we had available and, and still maintain social distancing. Uh, but we do get input from others in other ways. And I want to congratulate all of the folks who are participating, participating on that task force and the time and the energy, commitment of the members of this group. Uh, teachers, administrators, department heads, uh, district office staff. Uh, we have a number of teachers on that, um, on that task force. Uh, but we do have to have a number of experts, uh, in, in the various areas. We have to have our nurse, we have to have, uh, transportation, we have to have school food service. Those are the kind of things we, kind of folks that, that have to be there. Uh, subcommittees, now, this, this committee has met a couple of times, and will meet again on Thursday. But subcommittees, that's, that's where the real work occurs. And we'll talk about some of those subcommittees in just a little bit, where they dig down and look at the input that they've gotten, uh, from various sources. And, and where, uh, teachers present ideas and problems and issues and, and pitfalls that they may see, uh, in the future for, for whatever plan, uh, we put into place. So all of those things are being talked about. How are we gonna transport students? How are we gonna feed students? What happens if we can't be in school every day? What happens if we can't be in school every day, and how, and how do we address those things? Uh, so additional meetings, meeting with all of the principals, uh, meeting with executive directors in, in smaller groups and those kinds of things, uh, to move forward. Uh, I can't stress enough the difficulty of this task. The situation is evolving rapidly. Things change every day. We just got, uh, the recommendations from the state released yesterday. Uh, so this group began working when we had a relatively flat curve. A few weeks ago, when this group was talking, we really were looking at, um, what appeared to be a good situation in South Carolina. We saw, we saw the, the curve flattening, we saw fewer cases every day, and then, uh, Memorial Day hit. And, um, and, and the, the cases started spiking. That's something that we have to look at. There are so many unknowns and things change so often. So we have to consider, uh, a wide range of options, uh, as we move forward. If you look up there on the screen, you can see the feedback that we received. Teachers and staff, eighteen hundred responses. That's more than half of our employees responding, uh, to our survey. Parents and guardians, eighty-eight hundred. Um, you know, you, you can't account for, for maybe, uh, more than one parent in the same family filling out separate, uh, surveys, but, you know, you can, you can roughly estimate that about a third or more of our parents responded to it. So we are getting good feedback. You add to that the emails and texts and phone calls and letters and, uh, and other means that, uh, people are using to give us some information. Here's just a little bit of that. Uh, it's not surprising that health is, is a huge concern for our, for our communities, for our teachers, for our parents. Um, a third of the parents saw health as, as their, their top priority. But then moving forward, we see health screening, uh, class size and maintaining physical distance. Those are the things in mental health for our students. Those are the four things that, um, uh, that got the greatest response from both our parents and our teachers and staff. And of course, the task force is, is taking that information into account, um, as it make plans, uh, for the, uh, for the coming school year. Some other things that, uh, that we ask, um, what do you think that, uh, the school year should look like? Full-time virtual was something that was brought up, and, and you can see that, uh, parents, um, gosh, tw- almost twenty percent, a fifth of the parents saw that as, as something that they want us to seriously consider. About half of our parents and teachers would like for us to have face-to-face school. Of course, that would be with, uh, health and safety rules in place. And, and I think that, um, most of us would like somehow to, as quickly as possible, to get back to a, uh, to a more traditional, uh, education system. Uh, and then a variety of things were also suggested. So here's what we're looking at on continuing, a continuum of settings. There really are three options. I mean, there, there are three things you can do. We can have normal school operations. Now, normal may not be the same as it used to be, but that's one thing that keep, that we could do. Over on the far left side, if, uh, if safety were not an issue, if we, we knew we could do these things safely, safely, normal school operations is the way to go. normal school operations is the way to go. On the other extreme, and this is something that has to be a contingency based on the state guidelines, and, and we've been working on it for, for a while, is distance learning. We don't want to go that route. We know that we may have to, and we know that it has to be a contingency. And we know that, that should there be a, a resurgence of the virus or, or continued growth in the virus and, and spreading the virus, we, we could end up having to do that. And we have a team working on that. Our distance learning committee is, is working on, on that and putting those things in place. We've talked to this board a number of times in, in recent weeks about our anticipated use of CARES Act funding. In fact, we've already, already made arrangements to get laptop computers in for the majority of our students with the goal being to, to expand that to all of our students as we move forward. But there in the middle, that hybrid teaching and learning model, that's, that's kinda where we're having to do the most work. That's where the committee is looking because from a safety standpoint, the likelihood that, that everything is going to be back to normal six weeks from now, you know, possibly not. So we have to look at social distancing. We have to look at those preventive measures. We have to look at, at help extra building sanitation. And that's where the, the task force is really spending their time, trying to find the balance, trying to find what is going to be the, the best approach for Aitken County. And we, we are fortunate that we have a state task force that has given us a lot of recommendations. And the team is going to continue to look at those. But what does an hybrid teaching model look like? It could look, i- is it something that's going to be students in school one day a week and, and rotating through that week with additional learning through, through virtual means? Two days a week, three days a week? Are all students gonna, gonna be the same? Is, is every student's experience gonna look and be the same? Are younger students gonna have more in-person instruction and less time with, with distance learning? Are older students gonna have more distance learning? What about students with special needs? What about our English learners? What about CTE students and, and courses that require hands-on experiences? Those are questions that have to be asked and answered, maybe not answered fully because it, it may not be possible in, in, in the environment. Looking at students with special needs, I talked with our interim special programs director earlier today, Ms. Wiley. And, and we talked about, and, and the, the task force is talking about these things because each of the subcommittees is bringing those ideas to the task force. And those things are being vetted. And, and people from, from varying backgrounds within the committee have a chance to, to throw rocks at it and try to determine, you know, what's going to work. But, but looking at things like teletherapy and looking at things like developing curriculum and opportunities that, that are appropriate for, for students with various disabilities. Also IHP teams are gonna be critical with our special needs students because services have to be delivered safely and our IHP teams need to look at students individually. And, and what does it mean to provide that instruction and that learning model safely in various situations? In your packet, you've got a draft of, of our phasing model, an idea. And I'm, I'm not putting that up on the screen because it is just that. It's just a draft. But I wanted you to have it so that you can see the kinds of conversations and, and, and possible phasing that, that's going to happen or could happen once a final plan is, is proposed to you. So those are just some of the things. If you look up there now and look at the guiding principles, yes, sir, that's, that's down. You know, keeping students and staff physically and emotionally healthy. That's gonna be key to, to, to a quality reentry into school. Maintaining continuity of teaching and learning. One thing that we learned in the last quarter of the previous school year is that we have to continue teaching and learning. We were in an emergency situation on March sixteenth. We had to, to hold our ground. We had to make sure that students didn't lose any more than, than they had to lose. We had to make sure that they got reinforcement of the learning that had already taken place face-to-face in their classrooms. So we had to create a model to finish out the school year that addressed those concerns. We couldn't proceed with, with new learning because we had students who weren't prepared and teachers who weren't prepared to provide it in a, in a distance platform and in a remote means. So we had to do what, what had to be done to, to hold the line where students were. It's not an option anymore. We can get away with that for a quarter. We can't get away with that going forward. We have to move forward with teaching and learning. So we have to ensure access and equity for all students. That's why we're moving forward with, with providing devices for our students. Why we're going to move forward with working with our state and federal leaders and with our local utilities and state utilities to ensure that we have internet access for our students. Won't happen right away. Not an overnight fix. It's something that we have to have scaffolding in place in between that. Communicating with our stakeholders is gonna be critical. It's, it's why we've, we've scheduled. July fourteenth has the date that we come to you with the plan that we believe will work for Aitken County public schools. That's thirty-nine days before August seventeenth. State recommends twenty days. So we've got some scaffolding built in there and a backup plan there. Because if conditions change and our thirty-nine-day plan somehow has to be adjusted, you just approved tonight, another meeting on July twenty-eighth, which is exactly twenty days before August seventeen. So that gives us a couple of shots at this. Our desire is to have a workable plan that we believe we can spend those thirty-nine days putting into effect, providing the training, providing the resources, providing the, the equipment, providing everything that we need to make a successful start of school, whatever it looks like. Because we still don't know what it's gonna look like. And, and I know that's the question that everybody gets. I know that's the question that every teacher gets. I know it's the question every board member gets. I know it's the question I get multiple times every day. What's it gonna look like? And we just still don't know what it's gonna look like. But we do know that we're going to have a plan. And, and even when we tell you what we recommend that plan to be, it could still change because again, the conditions on the ground are likely to continue to change. But, but, but we believe we're gonna have enough options built in that we'll be able to do that. Ensuring flexibility of operations to meet the needs of students, again, flexibility. And following those guidelines from the CDC, DHEC and, and the State Department. You know, it's important for us to remember those things like layering. When students are in school, and we do expect students to be in school, whether it's all of our students at once or, or just groups of our students. But things like distancing, things like the amount of time in close proximity to someone else, barriers like, like masks and, and face cards, hand washing, sanitizing, extra cleaning. All of those things go into making a safe opening to school. So putting all of those conditions in effect so that when we do get back to school, our teachers can focus on teaching and our students can focus on learning. Our areas of consideration, and, and these are our subcommittees that we talked about. Health and safety, social emotional support systems, teaching and learning, communications and community engagement, human resources management. And operations, and look, look at all the pieces. Operations is our biggest subcommittee. You can see all, all of the moving parts that, that are gonna go into operations and making sure that things fall into place. Just wanna say a couple of things and I'll answer your questions and, and give you a chance to make comments. But, you know, in anticipation of the development and the presentation of, of our plan, I want you to just keep a handful of things in mind. One is, don't expect things to go back to the way they were. Because if you're expecting things to go back to the way they were, I'm afraid you're setting yourself up for disappointment. So, so I think that's important for, for us to, to, to have that as part of our paradigm. August seventeenth, twenty-twenty is not gonna be like August seventeenth, twenty-nineteen. So just, just, I think we need to recognize that. Each of us needs to allow ourselves time to adjust and get used to that new reality. And I think we've been adjusting for the past three months and we continue to adjust. But if you're like me, a month ago, six weeks ago, I was still believing that, that we were gonna knock this thing out and we were gonna be back in, in our, in our semi-normal mode come August. And it's looking less and less like that's gonna be the case. So give yourself time to, to reckon with that and adjust to it. Next thing is be patient. Please be patient with others. Be patient with the process because you are going to continue to get those questions that you're already getting. But be patient with the process. Be patient with yourself. Most of all, be patient with me. Recognize, recognize that whatever the plan is, whatever the plan we propose to you, reentry is going to be stressful. This is gonna be a stressful thing for, for all of us. It's gonna be a stressful thing for our teachers. It's gonna be a stressful thing for our school leaders, for our students, for their parents. It's gonna be a stressful thing for employers who are having employees who are our parents come to them with the realities of, of, of maybe a, a hybrid back-to-school model. So those are things that, that are gonna be there. Change, just change in general is stressful. Think about the capacity. Some of us will have the capacity to jump right in and learn in, in a virtual classroom. Some of us have the capacity to jump right in and teach in a virtual setting. Not all of us have that. And so that's gonna be something. Economics is gonna be stressful. People continue to, to not have jobs. People continue to have to decide between childcare and, and going to work and those kinds of things. And, and we're not, you know, summer started ten weeks early. It could possibly extend even longer and parents have, have those things to deal with. So there aren't a lot of certainties. There aren't a lot of certainties, but there is, there are a couple of certainties. The one certainty that I want us to always remember is this is temporary. Can't tell you how temporary. My definition of temporary, like I said, six weeks or two months ago was different than my definition of temporary is now. But it is still temporary. We will get through it. You know, we've been saying that since the beginning. The first talk that I, that I gave, the video talk that I gave, I talked about all of us being in this together and that we would get through it. And that's still the case. We will get through it. And then finally, the other certainty that, that you have is that I'm gonna be here. And I'm gonna be here to provide support for, for our, our teachers, for our families, for you, to provide leadership for our staffs and students and their families. And I'm gonna be here to help us all work through it. So stay tuned. On July fourteenth, we hope we have a solid plan to propose to the board. And, and we believe that we're gonna have something that while the stress is going to be there, hopefully it is something that will make sense and that people will be able to embrace as we head toward the opening of the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Um, just, I kinda wanna, I know we're going long here, but I, I think I wanna take a little bit of time too here at this point. I know there's a lot of anxiety and a lot of questions out in the community about what we're doing. But, you know, I have confidence in Mr. Lawrence and the staff that they're developing a good plan for us to, to look at in July. And, you know, kinda the vision there is probably we'll approve a plan with some options in there and maybe we won't know all the details in July, but there'll be options and, and, you know, things may change on a day-to-day basis. So there'll have to be some flexibility in there that the staff can, can, can change directions on the dime or something like that. But, but I would like to allow the board members to offer some comments here. If there's something in particular that you just can't live with in a plan or, or something that you're looking in the plan so that we don't get till the middle of July and we're just diametrically opposed to what we had in mind there. So I'll, I'll give you, for instance, you know, I kind of envision like four types of students. One that's gonna come back to school, like that fifty-one percent that wanna come back to school, but probably in some kinda hybrid model, you know, maybe one day a week, two days a week, whatever it is. And then there's probably another group of students that ju- just wanna do virtual school. And that may be virtual through like a program that we have and we administer or a virtual program for the state or homeschool or something like that. And then you'll have maybe a fourth type of student that will come back to school for a couple of days and just say, hey, this isn't for me. I'm really scared. There's too much anxiety. And they wanna shift back to virtual or something like that. So, you know, that, that's kinda what I see, you know, the, the students we have to deal with. And, and one of the concerns I have there is, you know, with the classroom teacher, I don't really envision the classroom teacher livestreaming their class, you know, and trying to accommodate students at home and students in their class. I kinda see that virtual thing being a separate piece in, in the pie there, kinda like what you had up there on that diagram there. So that, that's kinda just some of the concerns I have. It's just overloading our, our classroom teachers and trying to make a, a good break there between virtual and, and school. But I'll just open it up to others too so that, you know, Mr. Lawrence and the staff have some ideas, you know, where, what we have in mind too. So I see Mr. Crane with his hand up, so go ahead.
All right. I know all of us were glad, turn that back on, sorry. All of us were glad yesterday when we, we finally got the news from Superintendent Spearman and at the state level, giving us some guidance moving forward. And I know we still have to hash through a lot. And I'm glad we've got really an, an awesome list of, of folks on the task force working on things. I don't necessarily wanna wait three weeks to the fourteenth. I realize that may not be feasible. But of course, we're all getting questioned, I know that. And the, the chart that was on that showed the breakdown of what, what parents and whatnot are interested in is essentially the same conversational responses that I've gotten in a very similar breakdown as well. But, but the biggest thing is no matter what the decision is, parents wanna kind of be kept in the loop on the process and want, just wanna know whether it's the one they want or not. They wanna know because they need to start planning from a logistics standpoint, which you mentioned. So if it were up to me, I would actually bump that up a week. That's, that's three weeks from now, but that's, that's just my take on it. One, one thing that I don't know if this is a back-to-school task force consideration or not, I've had a couple of folks asking me about extracurriculars past. The, obviously we've dealt with athletics right now. We've dealt with, with band right now. But I've been starting to feel some questions about like basketball season and things like that, which obviously we don't know crystal ball, right? We can't look that far out. But I would just maybe drop that as a pin in the bucket to, you know, maybe take a look at that. I know we'll get guidance from the high school league on that as well, hopefully. So, so that, that's all I'll say on it. I would, I would like to maybe move that up. I don't know if anyone else would be amenable to that or, or at least have some very regular, very good communication sent out.
We certainly can, can keep the communication regular. And yet out there, my, my concern about moving that timeline up is the committee or the task force has to get the work done. And so they're limited in the number of, of opportunities that they have to get together. We also have a holiday in, in the middle of that period of time. So it would be, and I would be pushing it to get, but, but we certainly, as we, as we move through the process, we can, we can share more from a, from a communication standpoint.
Charlie?
I think that'd be good.
Dr. Bradley and Mr. Ness.
I, I, I think my concern is more about communication than final product. You know, we, we, it, it's about the interface between administration and the board, really. You know, I go to the grocery store and people come up to me and say, what are you guys gonna do about next year? Are we, are we gonna have school or what are we gonna do? And I'm sitting there saying, well, I don't know, you know, it depends on the state. And I, I, you know, I shoot them a bunch of bull really because I don't have a clue what we're gonna do. And, and one reason why I don't have a clue is because nobody's talking to me about what you're doing. You, you, you have a committee going, which I read about in the paper. And then I, you know, I've, I've got the communication today about... And then I, you know, I've, I've got the communication today about who's on it and what they're doing and all that. It sounds great, but I didn't know that. And I guess I could have picked up the phone and called and found out, but, but you know, I, I feel like I'm bugging you if I do that. We, we need some, you know, if it's nothing but an email that says, we, the committee's mad, but you know, here's some ideas that were kicked around, da, 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 that would be helpful. I think it's also, the board needs an opportunity to make comment. Because ultimately, we're the guys responsible. You know, we're the guys who have to answer for what y'all do. And I, I think that the administration's sort of elusive say to that. I don't want to come in here on the 14th, get a PowerPoint presentation of 20 minutes or so, and then be expected to stick my hand up and say, yeah, I approved this. I, I've got to have some time to think about it, read it, study it. I'm not a quick study if, if I really want to involve myself in the process. And as a board member, I see that as my role. I mean, I know that we're the legislative, you're the executive, and I don't really want to come and do the job, but, but I do want to be well-informed enough to, to, to like what I approved. And I want to feel good about the fact that I had the opportunity to, to give whatever input I have, whether you listen to it or not. And I know I give a lot and you probably listen to a little bit of it, don't watch of it out, which is okay. I mean, I still get the opportunity to vote on what you come with. And that's the way it works. I mean, I've been on both sides of the fence, I know how it works. But, but I do think that, that I would feel better if, if I, as Jason, I think, alluded to, I don't know if I'm saying the same thing you said, but if we had an opportunity to just sort of get a few key points about what's happening, how it's progressing, give us an opportunity to, to say to you or whomever, like I did tonight about what the teacher told me, you know, you might, but all those people, you probably already thought about that. If you hadn't, you need to. I mean, we buy, God knows how many computers, but I still don't know what we're going to do with them, you know? I know in a general, or general way, but I don't know specifically, and maybe I don't need to, but if I'm going to vote on it, I do want to know. And, and I, I know you guys did, everybody tells me and I believe you, did a wonderful job in the emergency situation from March here. I mean, no complaints. I haven't really heard many complaints. But if somebody asked me exactly what, what did y'all do in those three months, I can't tell them. I mean, I could tell to be fair, a bunch of kids, and we had virtual learning. Well, what's virtual learning? Well, you know, that's when they use the computer, you know, and that kind of thing. As to what you did with that computer, I don't know. You know, and again, I guess I could have made a point to find out if I wanted to. And I'm sure you would be glad to be, but tell me if I just asked you. But again, when you had a crisis mode, people were working from home and all that, it's, it's just hard to, to do that. So let me be lazy and just be able to something along the way to, to at least share with constituents and feel like I know a little bit about what's really happening. I mean, that, that, that's sort of a general feeling I have about any, most of the things we do, you know, I want to be deliberate. I want to know what's going on and what the thinking is and that sort of thing. One, one thing I do need to share is I got a call from a teacher who was upset about a photograph that was in the newspaper the other day about, of the group that was meeting. And the teacher said the photograph could not look like the individuals were wearing masks and social distancing. So I don't know if it were or not, you know, photographs do funny things, but I don't know. But if we're going to send that, if we're going to set up that press in your list, we need to practice what we preach, you know? We, we probably, I'm not wearing a mask tonight, I did about half the time, but I can't talk if I got a mask on. You're going to be, I'm going to talk tonight. I am, I'm a boy, yeah. This teacher went on and he, he was actually in the building when they were preparing instruction packets and so forth. And he said it was concerning because the people were not wearing masks and masks and social distancing when they were doing that. And it's concerning what, what we're going to do when we bring kids in. And he, he asked us to administer a matter, administer something about what's going to happen. I think there's a suggestion we need to tell people who work for us, follow the CDC Act, if that's an order. And maybe we need that order. Just to remove any doubt, I mean, they, they need to know that the board with the administration is really standing behind primarily the social distancing and the mask-wearing and situations where there's a question. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bradley.
Again, I don't think this could be, I, I think, given the circumstances, I mean, what, two weeks on your regular job and then you did this major crisis that's unprecedented by a superintendent taken in history. And I do think that you and your staff have done a wonderful job. Really appreciate it. I know I sound protocol a lot, but I'm, I'm really, I do appreciate the hard work you've done and thank you. I'd like to say that.
Thank you. And I just want, just for the record, I was in the room when that photograph was taken and, and the photograph is played treats because they were social distanced when that I was taking.
So I think Mr. Nestle, Ms. Jackson, and then Ms. Shealy.
Yeah, just real fast, I mean, just some comments on, so I understand two things that, I mean, you're going to put everyone's health and safety first with what we propose, I understand that. But when, and I know you said this is like a draft, draft, draft of, of the phased-in plan, but just some general, I think folks are going to find it kind of untenable. So there, there's a lot of hard things that are going to come in our future, right, to deal with, as you said. But just kind of a question and comment, we wouldn't treat all grade levels the same, right? Or, or would we? Because I'm just, you, you can't, you know, if, let's say you only go to school two days a week, you can't teach a five-year-old how to read two days a week.
And that's one of the questions that, that we've asked the task force to look at and, and certainly that the state task force has looked at as well. Because like you, when I, when I look at students who are with certain disabilities and, you know, they're not, you know, one day a week is probably not going to get it for them. I look at kindergarten as the first graders learning to read. I just don't think they're going to learn to read one day a week or two days a week or, or so forth. But on the other hand, I might see an, an AP language student who could very easily do their whole course virtually. So yeah, we're going to have to differentiate on some things and, and those are, are the questions and the plans and the scenarios that the task force is having to run through. And all of those, all of those things are being considered. Those are some things that have already been brought up. And there are some things that possibly none of us have thought of that, that they're also going to have to consider as we go forward.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes. I would like for the task force to be mindful of transportation. And when I say transportation, I mean, I know that we, is it 39 students to a bus? I just heard that about the boss.
Yes. There's a task force recommendation.
Okay, 39 students per bus. My concern with that is if there are, if we have to make multiple trips with the bus for those parents who still have a job, we can't let those buses be continuously late. Those parents got to get to work on time. So I would just like to see something, maybe the schools and, I'm just throwing this out there. Maybe the schools open up just a little bit earlier so they have the option to drop off those kids so that they can get to work on time as opposed to waiting for a bus and they don't know what time is coming.
And that's certainly one of the recommendations from the state task force is, is to create a schedule of, of staggered arrival and staggered dismissal. It extends the school day, not with the students, but it extends the school day for staff, but it does allow for those transportation issues and it also helps with some social distancing issues.
Great, good, thank you.
I think I should be flexible in how to manage the schedule of school day.
That's, that's one of the things that, that the state superintendent plans to seek a waiver on. Yes, sir?
Yeah, that would be a big help. Ms. Shealy and then Mr. Crane.
I would just like to see because of living in the Wagner area, I know you know this, Wagner and rich spring and all that, I know we're talking the possibility of more virtual learning. And the internet service is so slow and so bad there. I know myself, I have the highest speed we can get. And even during our Zoom meetings, my internet service would go down. So, you know, maybe look at some things. I know Dr. Bradley and I have talked and he has even mentioned, you know, the possibility of doing DVDs or whatever, just whatever we can do to ensure that those kids will be able to, you know, access that same stuff without.
And that's one of the, one of the suggestions that, that the task force has, has batted around, especially if, if say students are able to come to school on a, on a limited basis, whether it's one day, two days, three days a week, whatever that might be, they would be able to download content, whether it's videos of their teachers instructing or curriculum experts doing the instruction, whatever it is, if we needed to, to do some, some kind of, of lessons like that. But they would be able to download that content, take it home, interact with, and then the next day that they're scheduled to be back in school, that's when small group instruction could take place with the teacher to, to work over with specific students on their specific needs.
Mr. Crane?
A follow-up from Dr. Bradley, then maybe more to other little things. I've, I've gotten a ton of negative opinions about requiring kids to wear masks, especially young kids, both from the breathing issues with, with some young kids and that's, that's legit, to just little kids are, you know, going to be doing this all day. So I think that's, obviously we've got to think about that. One person suggested the shield. I'm just throwing that out there. I'm not a big fan of part of this draft. Either I know it's an early draft, but that is what it is. With, with the, with the task force meeting, I'm presuming a, a good dip over the next three weeks. Can we get that schedule and possibly either sit in or, or get a, I mean, even like a daily, here's a quick bullet list of what we're moving forward or moving away from? And I realize a lot of this, we're, we're kind of held hostage by what the state, you know, kind of puts out to us or whether we're going to be able to get some leniency on days and things like that. But I just, I want to be kept in the loop a lot because my constituents want to be kept in the loop a lot on this. To your point earlier that Mr. Lawrence is, you know, anxiety about what do we do? Because there's a thousand things, people are running through their head with jobs and, you know, kids' health and safety and, and economics. I know we're taking all that into account, but I just want to be able to give as many possible updates as I can. I mean, I, I've had to do that five times a day if I get some of, if that's a possibility. I don't know, I guess they're meeting some in person, some probably by Zoom or...
Yeah, that's correct. In fact, the, the subcommittees, a lot of their work is done, you know, emailing each other and, you know, certain, you know, members of the committee, if we give this assignment and then they, you know, they, they share that document with each other and, and work in that, in that fashion. But, but certainly the, the main task force meetings would be open to you. Just keep in mind, 40 was the number that we set. And, and the reason that we set 40 as the number was because of social distancing and the ability to, to space our folks apart for, for work. So I ask that you not expect to be comfortable if you, if you visit a meeting.
Right. And I, and I get that, you know, we're not going to be able to hashen you necessarily say, well, they're, they're debating between A, B, and C today. And then five hours later, well, it's A, B, and C with a little difference or whatever. That's going to be more confusion than clarity.
I think a, a big issue is, is making sure that we update you regularly on the, on the work of the committee.
Mr. Bolton, and then I think we'll wrap up.
I'll keep it brief. To basically join in with what Patrice was saying, to me, the one thing we need to be careful of and we need to communicate well, and I know the task team will look at this, I have all confidence there, but when we, we talk about the busting and the transportation, I mean, we got to, somebody's got to think about, the, the elementary schools are already arriving at 7:00 AM and the high schools are at 8:25. So when they look at that, you know, rather than just say we're going to send a bunch of seven and eight-year-olds to school at 6:00 in the morning, I think we need to take that in consideration, they're seven, you know, they're, they're little seven and eight-year-olds. And so that's something that's going to make it more difficult, but I'm sure the task team will figure that out. And then the only other thing was I, from what I hear, and you would know this, Mr. Lawrence, if each school has a task team looking at the back-to-school criteria for COVID-19, are those task teams being, are they weighing in on the larger task team? Are they being at, because from what I hear, they've already overturned, I mean, they've, they've turned over pretty much every stone already themselves from a school level, you know? So is that, is that information being considered?
I was going to speak to that. So what we do, Mr. Bolton, is we brought the principals in so they can work on the nuances of each school. Because each school has a different nuance, like the class size, what is social distancing looks like at Aiken Elementary, it was totally different from Aiken High School. So they're working on the nuances, so we're all in one plan, but for us as the district team to work on the nuances of every school, we would leave something out. So that's what they're, when they're back-to-school teams together from their school level to work on just the nuances of what is social distancing look like, how do you space these out, where we assign those to give kids directions, those kind of things. So they have a list of things that they're working on that is specific to your school.
If I could add something, that was a great description for this. The main task force has elementary, middle teachers, principals on that task force. The task force came up with the core competency, the thing that every school needed to go back and figure out a way and how it will function in their school. So everybody has the same areas of focus that they need to consider that was developed by that team that included elementary, middle, high school folks. So we want to make sure everybody is looking and considering the same processes and how they function within their own individual schools. So we had to give them, I didn't want to give them a blank piece of paper and say, okay, go paint enthusiasm. How does that look? It looks different to everybody. So we had to give folks some core things to look at. And Phyllis has done a great job of leading this process and making sure there's some things that we missed. We, on the first sheet, didn't have playgrounds because guess what? I'm not an elementary person, I'm a secondary person, I never had a playground in my school. But the principal came back and said, we got to look at processes for playgrounds. So they do have a framework that they have to put the meat in and say, how does it function within their schools? But even down to the details that we've considered, and again, nothing, no decision has been made, some schools serve all paper while others have trades. So we have to then get that feedback as a mutual exchange on how that would, would actually function. So that, that's what those subcommittees and the schools are filling in the general overall gaps.
I would like to thank Dr. Gamble for, for leading this, this task force and facilitating and keeping, keeping folks on track. There are, there are a number of members of, of the task force in the room. Y'all stand up so that we can see who's, who's working on this, on this task. So this is a hard-working group.
I appreciate everyone's patience tonight. I know we're going long, we have a short executive session, but hopefully this discussion has relieved some of the anxiety too. And I think, you know, we've got a commitment to get some routine communication to kind of keep us in the loop on the 14th work, kind of up the speed and, and we'll be able to work collaboratively to, to move forward together after that. And I'm pretty confident in the task force that we're going to have some good, some good ideas. And there's going to be stuff that we missed, just like Dr. Foster just said, and we'll just kind of learn together and we just all have to be patient, like Mr. Lawrence said, and, and work together and, and we'll, we'll get through it. All right, so we do need a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of considering the following matters in such order as the board deems appropriate, contractual matter and an employment matter. Following executive session meeting, the board will reconvene into regular session to announce the matters considered and to take any actions that may be necessary. Do I hear a motion?
No, second.
So it's been moved, the second we go into executive session, everyone in favor, raise your hand. We're good, that's nine. So how about the, maybe five minutes?
Yep.
Yeah, it doesn't always work that way. I was there. You know me, right? I'll wait until I'm ready for us. Thanks.
Okay, we got her?
No.
Patrice.
This is what we have to say in Holland.
She did?
In a bad way.
We have five minutes.
Four.
Four really? We're going by half clock every day.
No, no.
It's like slow.
All right, so, no, you're good. While we were in executive session, we talked about a contractual matter and an employment matter. So, no motion is required for the contractual matter, but we do have a motion for two motions for the employment matter. So, whatever, someone will offer a motion.
I'll make the motion that we move the chief of personnel and that portion of the deputy superintendent job to a one-person job. Though if I said plain enough, we're gonna...
It would be a director of student services?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Director of student services. Motion to do the second position.
Or director of student services.
Sorry, student services. Sorry.
Yes, so that's the motion is to create a position of director of student services. So, we need a second event?
I'll second that.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded that we create a director of student services position. Any discussion on that? All right, all those in favor of that, raise your hand. Any opposed?
We need one motion passed.
All right, so now we have a second motion. I'll entertain for director of student services.
I move we accept the administrative recommendation to, like, say, I'm gonna need four to build that position.
So, it's been moved and seconded we accept the administrative recommendation for the director of student services. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hand. That's unanimous, and that's Mr. Carl White is appointed director of student services. All right, and one last thing, Kim?
We missed administrative... Okay, so we appreciate everything you do for us.
And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
Looks so better.
All right, all those in favor, get up and raise your hand, and then we'll be... I'll see you in July. We might add a little bit more things.